First off, to get into the order, I'll go ahead. City Administrator McNamara gave me a few thank you cards. And these were for the people involved in putting together those amazing flower baskets that she sent down to me. They're such an amazing way of wanting to be, and I'm shocked because as long as they did. So yeah, we'll all leave them out, and if you can pass them around, please send them along. All my great wishes to you guys. Is there anything else to put in the order?
I have a quick question. So I ended up having a conversation with, I think his name's Becky Wilson. He came and spoke to us about the Toll Brothers, affordable housing. And you know, talk about asking the city, is there any role for our city in helping those who need it? And you know, basically, he's been a... And so I'm curious if administration had any response or if there was even a legal role for the city to do that? I wouldn't be sure if there was any feedback.
Well, I don't have an immediate response right now because I wasn't prepared to answer that much. But we do have money in the budget that is specifically for affordable housing support that we've been debating. And that might be an appropriate place to do it. And we can, in the next meeting, bring in more detail for council.
And let me just clarify too, I know their concern is that the dues, the association dues for the Toll Brothers are going to, even for the affordable housing tenants. So I think there are some challenges or nuance to determine whether or not we can legally, legally respond. Because I mean, basically, I write at the association books here.
Yeah, I had a similar concern, and there's a lot of them that isn't right. Even the press, the people who do all the good fairness of committing to an ongoing cause. I share similar concerns and questions. So I was just, yeah, we don't have a hard seat now. I just wanted to raise that question and if we can get you some real information.
All right, is there anything else to go to the order? Okay, review of regular meeting agenda. This is just where maybe on consent that you may need to get pulled or you have concerns about. Or if you have some thoroughly issues. Anyone know? All right, so with that, we'll move on to our key discussion item is actually a workshop on fireworks. So again, as a part of the administrative, if you want to give, like, so you don't have to explain over anything.
Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Neil. In the, we have taken the time on the agenda to do the last community engagement that was planned a month ago on seeking community feedback for fireworks. So just as a reminder, we've been at summer stage asking for community feedback to progress markets which had council chats related to fireworks. So this is the workshop that's planned to get that last opportunity for council. Not that it is, you know, the absolute last opportunity. But just for something fairly informal for the community to offer their opinions. So in the front room, there, I put some questions up on the wall with sheets that are a little different than what's on the survey. And they're from the cards gotten throughout the year. And there are just different statements that we've had in support of fireworks, in support of, um, instituting, or we're hoping the community can engage to these questions and maybe offer a response to a different point of view that they haven't considered yet. So sheets upon the wall, some markers. And then additionally, I brought up those cards that we've been using all summer. I hope the community to offer feedback and take that opportunity to use those cards. And then finally, I put little cards we saw, which is just to gauge the depth of those first things tonight. And do you feel like you have enough interaction with council on this topic of fireworks? Just enough or too much or too little? So we know whether this kind of engagement strategy, whether the community hopes, helps. So ready to set up there? And again, just an informal opportunity for council to engage with members of the community. And that's what I have for presentation. And if I expect to know. And as promised, there are copies.
Thank you. So with that, that is our entire time up until the council meeting. So we can all get up and go check out what's set up out there and engage with anyone who shows up. Yeah, any copies? Yeah.
And we like you talk here on your paving, right? 45 degrees and like the temperature so they have to move.
Pretty.
Somewhat maybe.
Okay.
I get that definitely.
Okay.
I was remember that one?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I'm assuming there'll be some like rebuild rehabilitative plantings to go back in that area.
Yeah, it's hard to see now because if you're on the forward looking west where there's the whole of the or the present work and and going for forms or the war between there and the core actually push roots maybe to eat these. So there is some plantings that will go on and then that bank are looking at plus. But yes, there's planting.
Um, to have follow up here. I know most of the gets discurb and right for everybody to come in and sort of take over any of the things. The bases are much more rest.
Yeah. Um, I will double check. Uh the whole farm there sort of uh complaining, but nonetheless, they asked. We could pay the we said no, yeah, they did pay it, they so that how about me drop it and you buy the ass ball and they paid it. That's what we did in the parking lot area, that we don't maintain those credit areas that are technically public, but I'm not. But this was a situation that worked out well for the Grange um business and property owners, which are two different people currently um. But that's supposed to be true just right up there. For her next week on one forty second seven project, we're waiting for a storm drain filter box uh you be tell us still. Wanted to pay and get curbing down a little ahead of that, but we're slowly in that fit that will pass underground utility and. Been a lot of unidentified incidences up there, non uh traditionally laid. Water service and direct area, power lines, cable lines all over the place, so. Uh good news is it's it's not a huge due and change, but we're we're working a little slower than we had hoped. But that same company is like we're doing the doing the R R F D, so they're gonna jump down the main street this week and start recognizing concrete since they're kind of a sand filled there. Then work on the R R F Bs, which are the two rapid flash beacons on rain and stuff. Going to work with that, uh the art is out for the city site select conserves for city hall, support on for the uh. Do you please internally, please grow and then help us start. Say that now we have a contract that we also study on here in the next. Okay, whatever uh. Per being this number. Uh since we were we we have gone through this, like the battery trucks where we rent the cheaper for the month. It's partly funded by a grant for any desk or store. Um it's here a little later than usual, but that's not a big thing, it's actually a good thing that it'll be fall. So that's uh guys are starting early, taking shifts, have to be a C D double breaker for that. So they usually start at four or five in the morning or do a shooting, so we'll sleep better in town, which we only did for a time or last year. Use this contract services where we get kind of our journals cleared, that's about it, extra sand laying on the stone, that's about it, so. This had worked well um. It's a team effort, like I said, they run late from the middle early, so we don't do this regular work, but get get the sleeper out and about for a good bit of time. Uh but that's budgeted in our operations budgets. So last, this was the last weekend for seven day week public works, so our two guys who do the parks um. Maintenance and upkeep over the summers, which now back to a standard Monday to Friday four yard reef, they usually. In the busy season do four ten, ready for the day. And yeah, next thing we'll have, we'll bring a council, a contract amendment forward to council for the ball field. Since we got major land now, we have to adjust the engineering and survey work for that, so we'll. I just got that stuff today, we'll bet that it bet back and bring it in next uh meeting or two. Next slide. Uh third out, so we are not quite up to full height and grade, but we're getting there. So a lot of left is uh called out our moment slab, and that's part of the Jersey barrier system that will be integrated into the roadway. Um there's slab that will be under the road, the road is actually pulling the walls and falling over when you're looking west. Um pouring max uh the creek is done. Most of the regular walls below from ground grade up to surface level are in and watering moving this week and is being tested for. Even contaminants, so that's actually back on warming that down, most people don't know water gets rather going one way or another, but it messes up how we. Uh draw and distribute water from the tanks, so we'll be happy to have that back online with more. Uh normal operations, and the next slide is just the of any spectacle, push plans, uh fly through the drone. The come to you through the water. It's nice to have a funny something on that. Isn't afraid of technology and doesn't quite as well as anybody else. But yeah, they switch back in the stream, the trees, all the wonderful girl through the geotech and environmental folks, and it's doing what it does. That's about it. Public works last one, we much.
How come remember Google? Is there an accident on the uh the road which that mean block?
Uh we should have buses through by the last week of the first November, it may also be coincidental opening to the public, but. We're gonna use concrete and all that, and then yeah, then it's the final green. And mostly you don't even get that. And we might, you talk here on your paving, right, forty five degrees, and I think it's the. Temperature, so they have to move somewhat maybe um. They get that definitely, yeah.
I was remember that one? Yeah, I'm just curious, um I'm assuming there'll be some like rebuild rehabilitative plantings to go back in that area. Um.
You know, it's hard to see now, because if you're on the forward looking west, where there's a whole lot of the or the present work and and going. Forums or the war between there and the coal actually push groups need to eat, so there is some plantings that will go on, and then that bank are looking at plus. But yes, there's planning.
Um to have follow up here, I know most something gets discarded, it's often right for everybody to come in and sort of take over any of the things, so. The bases are much more correct.
Yeah. Um I will double check, I know when the whole project is done, it has a bunch of particular to be your main experience, so yes. I still don't know if we were just gonna pass that on to the next contract, but I have to check. That makes sense, right, because we've cut the big one down with this.
I don't know.
So I'll check.
Yeah, other questions? My question is, can we post the video on social media somewhere, because it's super awesome. Well, it's coming back to music. Yes, yeah.
Want us to try something, because we have uh. On the east side of the creek, looking west, maybe have a timing sensitive camera that snaps. Picture every minute and has station to get it the like construction video. So I think they're hoping to post that soon later, looking when there's roadway, but yeah, we can see about putting something up, I would very maybe just. Oh, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Right, next, we will hear from Director Kongs.
Hi, good afternoon, evening, sorry, good evening. Uh building permits and inspection is October first, but we already have our data, we issued twenty three permits. For single family, multi family last month, we've issued eighty to date. And all other permits issued in September were sixty one and were at about four hundred and twelve for the year. Inspections completed in September, about two hundred and seventy eight. Um inspections to date for this year is we're getting picking up on to about three thousand. Uh we have forty three permits under review and we have four ready for pickup, so. The good thing is we're getting closer, like more people are picking up their permits, which is good, and our queue is coming down, so that's always. Positive, but on that note, we will be giving a final platform and there's a lot of projects coming from. We, you know, that kind of up tick a little bit. Uh just our general community development, uh we brought forward the philosophy of the permit processing policy back, Troy gave a presentation. We just gave our second, uh we just completed our second draft. That's gonna get routed to our attorney and to our developer review committee next week. We'll submit that policy to the farmers by the end of October, and then we'll do a couple more. Workshops in November, early December, we'll issue C P A, and then we'll go to public hearing for planning commission and council in January. Uh we are also preparing the um. Economic development presentation for planning commission and city council, we already prepared, but planning commission, it will, uh they'll see it next week. Uh we are preparing to present the future land use map. The capacity analysis next week and the land use goals and policies. Again, the planning commission and council next week, so it'll be two nights in a row for us with the same kind of information. Uh capital facilities plan is coming along, we're uh gonna be preparing a written report for planning commission and council. Based on comments and conversations we've had at our previous meetings with both bodies. We'll get a C P A determine, C P A determination issued by the end of October. We anticipate hearing in December and adoption in January, so it's coming along. Transportation plan, we completed an audit of our policies, that's complete, that's where we kind of it's like this checklist, okay, P S R C. You know, whatever all the different elements are, so we completed that, and that actually was, I don't see there's what, but Steve was involved, or is that myself? So we completed that task yesterday, and it went back to our consultant. Um and we also received on Friday the draft transportation plan. It's a large document, so we'll give everybody about three weeks to review it internally, and then we'll wrap it up and get that back to our consultant, can we say on on track. Parks Trail open space is coming along, uh right now, Lurs is working on the C I T, that's the capital improvement. Portion of it for the twenty year plan, uh the theme new council approves uh one of the agenda items, we'll begin work on the park impact fee. Portion of it, uh this is a background work and does require a public hearing, so we're gonna try and move that along as quickly as possible. Uh we are set for hearing for November fifth and November fourteen. And adoption is expected on twelve seventeen, we'll have to keep track of that date, just in case our park impact fee. Doesn't get their full staff, we would like it to. Next. Right. Uh there, this is the one, I'm gonna show you a little homemade videos, if you, oh, there you go, it's two minutes. Let's just scroll through during the. And you're gonna update it to how all of our somebody's life. From the evening, the children call the pastor. There was my counter, I just. Actually, it's not that I just wanted to show you that we are coming into the next section. Um that was just a photo from the meeting, so we did have a pretty good turnout, so that was really nice. Excellent. Uh you can see, we actually printed out board, so on the left you'll just see the goals and policies, we had a nice printout of the binder. The banner clip, just in case anybody wanted to look at it, it was really interactive, and it was a really nice conversation with the community, so. We're really grateful that uh people showed up. Excellent. Uh so tomorrow, we are going to do the Southport toll dam E A P, a functional exercise incarnation. This is for a damn bad failure scenario. This exercise is done every five years, and it is really all hands on deck, so all of the administrative team plus. Will be in carnation tomorrow about seven thirtyish in the morning, and we'll be returning back. Probably about four, three or five o'clock. And uh one of us will report back, but you can see the participating agencies. There's, there's a lot, we had a pre-planning meeting today, and there were almost sixty people on that, on that. Oh, ninety seven, wait, and holy smokes, ninety seven. So it'll, it'll be fun, it'll be, the remote part, it's many of our first, so it's pretty exciting. Excellent. In other news, uh Cory's Cafe will open up where the faux Thailand was located. So I think a lot of people didn't know that they would be tired, so we just wanna make sure, you know, they didn't close because of economy, they were closing because. Uh retirement, so we're super excited, they're working on their T I now, my guess is they'll be open in November pitch. Uh if you haven't seen Red Pepper Pizza is working on their painting and their signage, um by the way, an approved mural for the sign there. Um Six Pizza is coming along as well, and they should also be open in the next thirty days. We are currently doing some work on our temporary sign permits, we're creating a log of everything that they see on Bay Rock Road and Main Street, because. People are just gonna keep them inside, they're only getting like that money that has um some disabilities that need to have a career that's clear. So we're gonna go through, we're gonna do another sweep, but I thought the first step. Log them, communicate with them, then pay them back, instead of doing it in rumor, wanna do that. Um we do have some pre-applications that are expected for an athletic facility on Bay Rock Road. And also a another subdivision and one other. Religious institution as well. That's it, must need to have any questions?
Councilor Newp, yeah, but you're super nice to have um. Maybe a lot where I put them, why? Do you think that there will be tracks for cluster for next year or next out?
We don't know, I hope it hasn't gone away, even the last two years of road construction, pretty much have the ability of. So we're hopeful, uh they have temperament, you know, so hopefully someone will come in. Uh we might have to look at renewing it, because they're only good so long.
Question, thank you. Very, thank you. So these are pictures from the at the farm that happened on Saturday night, so beautiful night. Uh double rainbow night on the farms, we showed Coco. Um we ended up having about a hundred and fifty people come to the event. Uh it was very well received, it was a wonderful partnership with the historical society, so they did a portion of free activities, apple pressing. Candy. For the state. Um because he attended, there's a picture of him. Uh go volume. These are, we have about sixty people stay for like the movie. Illuminary is out, the Holy Innocence Church was a wonderful partner, I mean, if you're able to park at the church and then go down to the farm on the slided path and. Took a beautiful look at it, really excited, this was um one of our events that we sponsored through our report of, yeah. And so um it really was, it was a good use of. And then in other news, that's not so reading, um just a reminder, H number eight, so next week we have that special conference meeting, that was started by thirty. And we'll begin the departmental budget presentation. As for Thomas mentioned, the land use element and the land use capacity memo. And want to uh recognize our finance team that not only have they been really busy with the budget and state audit. But they also attended the W F O A annual conference, um and got a lot of connections and information from them. They also connected with the regional open gap user group that we're in, there's quite a few people now using the open gap platform in the region. But of interest, K C L S on the street is one of the users. And they're using a budget module, so we have a fellow user on down the street to cooperate. And partner on getting that interface, I've been running with good ideas. Well, as of today, we have three stunning, and I mean, they're, they're amazing. Uh and created submissions from River, River View School District students on the mural for um Duval Market, and now in front of the visit Cory's puppet. And so we will ask them to come to the cultural commission on Monday night. Get a quick presentation of their ideas uh to the commission and uh pick a uh student muralist. And like I said, they're, they're really very well done, very impressive. Um let's see, we're working on our next Seattle, Port of Seattle event. That will be called on November or December fourteenth, we're calling it the Duval Express. It's a family event featuring trains and our depot building, and it's a very strong. We begin work with our lobbyists on October fourteenth, they're coming to visit Duval, they'll meet with the city administration meeting. They'll also tour with public works director to give us some of our larger projects and and see what we are hoping to achieve here in the city. I'm so very excited to have her underway. Uh after our Facebook post, we had Facebook posts that went out last week, uh late last week on the panelists. We did just want to write an update, we found out it doesn't call into public works. Very few of them have actionable information, but we are calling up with some other ancillary information that folks were able to provide us on safety concerns. We are also aware that some of our developments are substantial, so we'll process that. And we're a lot, so. This is a concern, we're tracking it, and just wanted to find the date to consult. And then finally, the Grange is receiving the King County Institute of Small Business Work for Green and Sustainable Business. From eleven thirty to two at the Seattle Community Administration Center, please let me know if you would like to attend. Uh they're hoping that we can have representatives from the city there and bring the Granger's kids to work. Uh next slide, so uh we have gotten some information about concerns with mufflers and loud noises. In the city, so wanting to bring a couple slides here to discuss. The uh this issue, so R C W forty six, thirty seven, three ninety is a provision. That deals with uh mufflers on cars, there are two key elements, one is. That you have to have a muffler, it has to be in good working order. And then the second element of that R C W is that you can't modify your exhaust system. And then have the noise emitted from it be, you know, beyond a certain level. It can't amplify or increase the noise from which a normal muffler would um perform on your car. Um so just a publicity sense level. Uh there is a provision penalties associated with violating um forty six, thirty seven, three ninety. The fines increase with each infraction, so first offense, and it goes up to a second offense, and if they're really don't be prosecuted, just stop on top of each other. Um so they kind of automatically go up in increments. The challenge, though, in enforcing this statute is that an officer must witness the infraction. So an officer has to witness a car going by or hear the noise and be able to associate with a vehicle for them to issue a citation. This is a super quick question on that, uh does it count to witness the video, or they have to see it first? Okay. Uh we did look at pursuing this issue through public nuisance or noise regulations. Uh that too is equally challenging, so no way it's possible. Perspective means the intensity, duration, and characters from any and all sources. So in order to meet the definition of a sound thing of public nuisance, the issue with the mufflers. Is that it has to have a duration that is a public nuisance, which is really hard to do with traffic passing. So the only way really to prosecute this, and I use the word like low being prosecuted, like issuing infractions. Is to do it through a long, specific activity. So the approach that Redmond, King County, and I will tell you, Chief and I um talking about this through the last week, and I was looking. At different cities around, a lot of cities are dealing with this, so I saw them being in Mont Platio, Bellevue, Redmond, King County. And the way that a lot of cities around us are approaching it, one to do a social media. And then two, to do targeted enforcement. Um we, I talked last week with Mayor for ten months, and we're sort of an idea that we have. Uh to support the community and their concerns is to do resonating council chat with a map of the city. To obtain specific times from geographical um areas to um assist with enforcement with that information. Uh to the police department, so we could have a council chat and um on our plotter, we have a big printer. Um we can get, you know, a big map of the city and ask it to be, come and give us some pushpins on where different um activities are happening and when. Um so that was another idea that we do in the past, we want to on our place to work. But that's kind of the general overview, and they're saying that the community, you know, certainly has concerns on this issue. That's my last slide, and we have to answer. Councilor Schiefer?
Uh related to the the noise problem, uh it goes hand in hand with with speed cars as well, I think it must give us uh. Understanding that we can definitely save the issue, I'd like to explore other possible enforcement uh methods. Including the uh use of a traffic camera that would be equipped with a. A receiver to record the noise and and record it in decibels. I realize that may be an issue with our state regulations, uh which are there for reasons I don't often, so uh but uh. I I think nonetheless is worth uh exploring and potentially uh. If we decide it's a route we wanna take, uh investment in in such a, you know, such a thing, uh the. The advantage of that, by the way, help to actually keep officers out of the, you know, out of the loop. It would automatically record the noise, potentially automatically generate a ticket or a warrant. Uh as as many decide, and wouldn't actually require uh an officer to be to be involved, so I think that's something that we can uh. Can support, I very much like the idea, uh by the way, of recording uh. Uh you know, streets and areas where this, this is more. I think that's a terrific idea that will give uh, you know, our officers, you know, places they they can target uh that as well. Is there a question for you, Chief, is there any uh? Device or anything that that are um ours are equipped with?
Recording devices.
Uh for, yeah, for craft, like craft ones.
No, there is no requirement regarding multiple violation to have any type of decimal level. To be reported, I would just kind of go off of your, your request regarding cameras, you know. Stay a little bit, you know, this whole state change. When you talk. Maybe a police officer who all traffic carriers require somebody to, that would be a condition before a truck.
Still, it's still.
Still requires some type of.
Sure. That's good.
But no, we're carrying sound devices, decimal meters.
Okay, yeah, sure.
And technically, if I was here, I'd be down the street, the muffler is excessively loud. Can stop somebody just for that, uh, and that doesn't exist.
I'll see you next week.
Yeah, that's one of the important parts of this. Do you, it's a visual and it's sound, but it doesn't require scientific decimal proof that there's a violation. It's actually a lower standard, but it does require a physical interaction monitoring, whether, you know, chief hears it going down and says, move that car. You can write infraction on that. It doesn't require that you have a decimal to do the citation. I don't like speeding.
Got any other question for?
Yeah, I think there were sort of times. So, um, yeah, I got the other question and I, I like the idea of sort of countering recurrence frequently with that. I know we had their side of, you know, around air brake usage and other things. It's also noise, you know, within city limits. Not knowing this for backfiring, it's okay, it's a lot of from younger kids, and that's kind of something that we see, not always. But if there was any value in sort of both thing like, you know, I think even hours last minutes. If my child incurred a two hundred dollar, you know, fine, there would be a conversation that you have. I don't know if there's any, you know, incentive to dissuade that behavior, but I know there's also a cost if you didn't. At the end of the day, you still need to know where the behavior was occurring, part of pushing that, but that might be something else that we could identify. You're it's sort of passive. Didn't send him, I guess, to, to do that, but like again, it's, I think this is one very hard, like a lot of the other nuisance complaints, by the time the officer didn't hear the behaviors, that's what's not frequent enough.
Yeah, and we, we have received a number of, and like from the topic, we've seen videos. And they told us specific times on the curve where we try to get out there during that specific time to target that area. Sometimes we catch them, sometimes we don't. Um, but now school has started up and there's a lot of new drivers on the area. That was a cover. It's that's some issue that's going on. I think also there's a lot of adults that in the area also have.
I know some of them.
It is, it is our to catch them. And write the infraction and then sub to the courts. We just had to do it that moment in time. We can't force somebody to modify their vehicle back to regulation, but you know, that's a later something.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember. Years ago, I think you might have been at that council, there was a gentleman that came and talked about the muffler talk, you weren't that one. Um, and they live off Cherry Valley. Uh, and I can try to go down there, you know, but they were right at the city limits on Cherry Valley. You know, town. Now they have a lot of information about each time of day. Um, so that was definitely a reported, I can try to find like, uh, that would be helpful. Um, and then I live along that and it's a nice straightaway. And if you get out of high school, it's me to correlate with that time. And they just kind of done it when they get on that and. You're going to go over the morning. Yeah. All right. So for a little of which the mayor's. Can we, is it, or is it, did those in another question or?
Well, uh, it, it, it's on the same side. So I'm not quite giving up on the state law yet. But uh, if somebody could, I'd like to be, could be pointed to that and read it. For example, we may be able to still issue a letter, an informal letter uh, that the parents will get by the way, it just happened to be a, a, you know, high school kid. Uh, you know, who owns that car, would get the letter. So it wouldn't be a fine. Uh, it would be a ticket or even official warning. It would simply be a letter. So uh, I'm, I'm just saying that's one possible idea. I'm not going to give up on that. Uh, if, if someone would be so kind as to point me to the state law, I'll, I'll read it and see if there's any possibility.
I can do that.
Thank you.
On mufflers, state law.
Speak hours.
Speaking hours, yes, yes. Yeah, and it's not necessarily speaking.
That is the only cameras that allow us to.
Is it? Is it? Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to go this comes up. Every one of these things, I think.
Yeah.
The big standard, the other way to follow it. That is something that all the may be dressed.
Sure, sure.
I think that is always a good screen that stage has regarding over issue of the client as well as making sure the client.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, anyway, thank, thank you. Appreciate it.
So with that, um, for a little over a while of time, so we'll go into German at seven oh eight. And can we take a panel group before we get on to the next? Okay, let's do it. So let's get back to you next.
Mayor Oberlander.
Here.
Mayor Protek McHenry.
Here.
Mr. Alfredson. Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Martha.
Here.
Mr. Toppel.
Here.
Ms. Snappland. Ms. Coolfield.
Yeah. Are there any additions in the agenda there at all? Just something for offices, I want to move to excuse customer as anything.
Uh.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think uh, and we can sort of get an excuse because of the protocol to work.
Always a few excuses.
Oh, no.
That is. You don't need this.
No.
Any other special agenda? All those in favor of the bringing the evening's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All of the votes, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we have three proclamations of evening. Oh, four, I'm sorry. Uh, the first one is the indigenous people's uh, indigenous, I can't say indigenous people's day. Uh, go ahead and read that to the record. The indigenous peoples of the Americas have lived upon this land since time immemorial, fostering thriving diverse culture, languages, and communities. And then, and whereas indigenous peoples have contributed miserably to the development and enrichment of the cultural, social, ecological, and economic foundations of this life. And whereas indigenous peoples continue to maintain deep spiritual, cultural, and ecological connections to their ancestral legacy, honoring the wisdom and traditions passed down through generations. And whereas indigenous peoples in the United States and across the world have endured centuries of colonization, displacement, violence, and the systematic oppression of their languages, cultures, and ways of life. And whereas, it is critical to acknowledge the resilience, strength, and ongoing contributions of indigenous peoples while also recognizing the need to redress historical injustices, support efforts for healing, justice, and equity. And whereas, the recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day promotes understanding and respect for the sovereignty, dignity, and rights of indigenous peoples, fostering an inclusive society that values and honors all cultures and histories. And whereas, Indigenous Peoples' Day serves as a reminder to honor indigenous communities, celebrate their enduring heritage, and commit to standing with them and pursuing social, marital, and economic justice. Now therefore, I, Amy Oberlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby proclaim October fourteenth, twenty twenty four, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Duval. I encourage all citizens to honor indigenous peoples, learn from their history, and work towards creating a more just, inclusive, and equitable future for all. Their history is a rich tapestry of resilience, wisdom, cultural diversity, and we give all benefit from understanding and respect. And then, next proclamation is mental health awareness, mental health or mental wellness awareness. Whereas, mental health is essential for the overall well-being of all individuals, influencing how to think, feel, connect with others, and manage stress. And whereas, mental health conditions are universal concern to millions of people across all communities, regardless of age, race, gender, or socioeconomic status. And whereas, the stigma surrounding mental health challenges such as the misconception that it's a society weakness, or the fear of being labeled, often prevents individuals from seeking the care and support they need. And whereas, raising awareness of mental health issues and promoting open conversations can help bring down barriers to treatment, reduce stigma, and encourage those who need to reach out for help. And whereas, mental health awareness week provides an opportunity to highlight the importance of mental health care, education, and advocacy, and to recognize and appreciate the tireless efforts of mental health professionals, caregivers, and advocates who provide invaluable support for them. Now, during this week, we must commit to fostering a culture of understanding, empathy, and support for those living with mental health conditions, ensuring that all individuals have the resources they need to live healthy and fulfilling lives. And whereas, promoting mental health is entitled to creating a thriving, resilient, compassionate community where every person can flourish in mind, body, and spirit. Now therefore, I, Amy Oberlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby proclaim October sixth through October twelfth as Mental Health Awareness Week in the City of Duval. It is our collective responsibility to increase our awareness of mental health, support those facing mental health challenges, and work together to build a community where mental will be a priority for all. Uh, the next one is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas, domestic violence is a pervasive issue that affects individuals in every community, regardless of age, gender, race, religion, or economic status, causing devastating physical, emotional, and psychological harm. And whereas, domestic violence is not just a personal issue, but a societal. One in four women and one in nine men experience severe and extreme hurt from violence in their lifetime. This not only leads to long-term trauma for the individuals involved, but also impacts families, children, and communities as a whole. The urgency of this issue cannot be overstated. Whereas, domestic violence is a human rights violation that undermines a person's safety, dignity, and right to live free from fear of abuse. And whereas, by increasing awareness and providing education about the signs of domestic violence, we can empower individuals to seek help, ensure that survivors receive the necessities afforded and services to heal and rebuild their lives. And whereas, violent shelters, crisis centers, advocates, and our dedicated law enforcement agencies are on the front lines, working tirelessly to support survivors, prevent abuse, and raise awareness. And whereas, the silence that often siren domestic violence can perpetuate the scandal of abuse. It's crucial that we break this silence, encourage open conversations, foster supportive environments, provide resources to those affected. And whereas, Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a call for our community. It's an opportunity for us to unite, advocate for survivors, promote prevention efforts, and work towards a future where everyone can learn three or less. Now therefore, I, Amy Oberlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty four as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Duval. I urge all citizens to take a stand against domestic violence, support survivors, and work together to promote safe, healthy, and respectful relationships. Our last proclamation tonight is for Hindu Heritage Month. Whereas, Hinduism, a spiritual religion, predates many of the world's civilizations, stands for the enduring power of faith. With a history that spans over thousands of years, it offers a wealth of philosophical, cultural, and spiritual wisdom to the world, a legacy that continues to inspire and guide us today. Whereas, the Hindu community does have significant contributions to the deals of science, education, medicine, arts, literature, business, and public service that left an indelible mark, not only in the United States, but also across the globe. Whereas, the enduring principles of Hinduism such as Pimsa, nonviolence, Dharma, righteousness, and the pursuit of knowledge and self-realization serve as beacons of compassion, justice, and harmony for individuals and society. Whereas, the vibrant festivals, traditions, and cultural practices of Hinduism, including Diwali, Holi, Navaratri, and others, enrich the multicultural fabric of our nation and foster greater understanding and appreciation for diversity. Whereas, Hindu Heritage Month, the time to celebrate the contributions of the Hindu community and recognize the profound and positive impact Hindu principles on society, also serves as a platform to promote interfaith dialogue and racial respect among all communities, thereby fostering a brighter, more harmonious future. Whereas, during this month, we honor countless individuals of Hindu heritage who have enriched the communities along the prom river valleys in the City of Duval, who continue to contribute to our nation's cultural and social landscape, testament to the enduring influence of Hinduism. Now therefore, I, Amy Oberlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty four Hindu Heritage Month in the City of Duval. I encourage all citizens to celebrate the rich heritage of Hinduism, learn from its traditions, and promote unity, diversity, and racial respect.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we do.
This is okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you so much.
You have an opportunity to share some comments.
Um, please do.
Namaste. Good evening. This is Shiva Kondomudi, I'm a resident of the City of Sultan. Uh, but I'm a part of the greater Hindu American community in Greater Seattle. I've been living in Seattle area for the last twenty-five years. I worked for Microsoft. And uh, uh, so first of all, on behalf of the entire Hindu community in the City of Duval and the Greater Seattle Region, I thank you, Duval City Mayor, Amy Oberlander, uh, city staff, uh, city council members, uh, city staff, uh, John Retero, for accepting and passing the request for the declaration of the proclamation of uh, uh, Hindu Heritage Month, Awareness and Appreciation Month in the month of October. Especially this month, uh, in October, uh, we celebrate festivals like Navarati and Diwali, which is to represent uh, the victory of good or evil, bringing everybody together and celebrate and seek knowledge from each other. Uh, so as we all can see, there is a greater uh, increase in the um, uh, population of Indian American community in Greater Seattle area, definitely in the City of Duval as well. And uh, we really appreciate city recognizing the presence of the community, uh, and uh, the contributions that, that the city, that the Hindu Americans can contribute to the, to the city. And we're also looking to do engaging service, community service engagements here in City of Duval and in Greater Seattle Region. Especially in the month of uh, October and November, we, we conduct some community service activities like raising uh, food, food drives, and uh, donating to local food banks and uh, and we look forward to engaging the City of uh, Duval and continue uh, uh, to collaborate on various initiatives that City of Duval takes up, and I look forward to continuing your engagement this year and going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to comments from the audience, I will read the role of the record. During the designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allotted a three-minute speaking duration, while representatives of organizations may address the council for up to five minutes before preventing timely disclosure of full name and city of residence. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in written form and expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office by noon on the meeting day, addressed to P O Box thirteen hundred, Duval, Washington, nine eight zero one nine, or deposited at the City Hall Dropbox located at one five five three five Kane Street Northeast or by email. Please be aware that the city council explores and has commissioned solely energy and public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. Council does not accept handouts or printed materials during public commentary sessions. Information intended for the mayor or the city council shall be directed to the city clerk, who will disseminate it following the submitter's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written public comments, subsequently turn to them to the city council for the relevant order. However, it's important to note that written comments will not be orally presented during the council for applicable order or official meetings. Any written comments received after the new deadline for written comments will be shared with council at the next council meeting as part of the city clerk's report. So with that, could we have anyone present that would like to provide a comment this evening? There's so, the first question of the writer, uh, Amy, and what gives you?
Katrina Dunn.
I'm sorry.
Uh, the people that sign up, one of the first person is Katrina Dunn.
Sure. Well, if she left, she was here for the
Okay. Um, Elisha, I'm sorry, concrete your last line, Brown too? Brandon, I'm sorry.
Please allow me a moment. We have Thank you. This is definitely Not open, thank you, Marcy.
Hey. Uh, thank you, Shere. Hi, my name is Alicia Green, and I'm the chair of and I spoke at the um, before I even started, thank you so much to the council members who have already responded to my email regarding um, uh, illegally modding mufflers. I really appreciate it, please, I appreciate your emails. So, I didn't feel like you guys had this again that way. Um, so I moved here about a year, um, and moved here about a year ago. And uh, I purchased my home because there was kids playing on the street, and I knew I was got a lot of kids, and it's really important to me to I be in a community where my kids can play on the street, and maybe my neighbors, and it is a community of people of state. Um, and I did not realize that my house backs up to one fiftieth, which is uh, what I get realizes how busy the neighborhood is. That's okay until the illegal mufflers, that was and it's not, it's just in the area. Um, an ambulance, best of all levels, a hundred point five, illegal mufflers are ninety-five from one. As somebody who's listened to the police siren falls shortly thereafter by illegal muffler, they're the same, you stay with the same. Um, and what's important here is anything above eighty-five can cause hearing loss, and anything from one ten, one twenty, even short exposure can cause damage. Um, so those of us that live around these streets and listen to the illegal mufflers on a regular basis, we're being exposed to decibels that are permeating our hearing as well as the hearing of our children, which is even more sensitive. Interestingly enough, there was a recent study published in um, the Current Issues in Personality Psychology that found a connection um, between young men scoring high on dark personality, especially sadism, and an interesting illegal modding mufflers. I bring that up because I want to contrast the family-friendly atmosphere that Duval has with the kind of people that seek to do harm. And that's what maybe illegal mufflers do, they cause harm. Um, it's their freedom to cause harm versus my freedom to free from harm. And so the question we have to ask ourselves is what kind of community do we want to, do we want to attract the families that want to make the community better, to forge tighter connections, that want to participate in civic engagement? Or do we want the people who are illegally modding their vehicles to be as obnoxious as possible and do active harm? Um, so with that, um, I'd like to thank you for your time, and actually, do I have thirty more seconds?
You have thirty seconds.
That one would be two fireworks. My daughter was a NICU baby, she was discharged uh, three weeks after being born six weeks early, she was discharged in July sixth. The nurses told me make sure you keep her safe from noise. Um, I had to leave Duval, um, because last year, my, there were so many fireworks, my neighbor said that they literally shook my house for hours, and I'm not kidding about the shaking, literally shook my house. My entire roof and yard were covered with fire risk tree. I don't want to have to fly from my own home when July fourth goes around. And even driving back the morning of July fifth, it's pretty smoky, and the areas has a risk for my daughter. So I'd ask, please, let's consider whether we really need this discharge. Thank you. Certainly, Ross?
Uh, not signing.
Uh, seeing that, we'll move on to consent. We have a motion for this evening's consent. So all those in favor, please say aye. I, all those both saying aye.
Uh, no. And I'm sorry, the, the, there's an item on the consent.
Well, we were thinking about
Okay.
There's not opportunity for
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
After the oath has been
Okay, okay.
But we can report it now.
Okay.
And we can talk about.
Okay. That's good.
Thank you. Thank you, council member. All right, um, we'll move on to schedule items. Uh, we did use the administrative report uh, during the meeting in a hole. As well, we went, we did a mayor's report, a relatively brief report. Uh, we had a week before last, I was uh, honored to participate and lead the Association of Washington City's annual board retreat, um, and board meeting. Uh, the board meeting, we officially approved the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six E W C legislative agenda. Um, I think I mentioned previously that um, it was notable that we had unanimous consent for an approval of the entire legislative agenda. Uh, I think in large part due to the diverse group of elected officials from across the state participated. Um, same thing occurred at the board meeting. It's not quite unanimous, um, we don't remember the last one of was. Uh, we had some minor adjustments and overwhelming improvements to the legislative agenda. Um, and the agenda was approved unanimously by the board. Um, board retreat was at a significant amount of time, looking at strategic plan and evaluating risks and opportunities for the coming years, um, as well as did a significant amount of team building. And I would say that uh, this board is more diverse than um, in political thought of and other areas than I've seen um, in my time on the E W C board, and it has become a very faint knit group. Um, and I feel very fortunate to uh, lead that group this year and encourage everybody that is able to get more involved with the Association of Washington Cities in the coming years. Um, I also had the opportunity to participate recently in the Leadership Inside Mayor's Lunch that was held at Cascadia College a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the CEO and workman in health was the moderator. Um, there were some fantastic questions from the audience, um, and it's always a great time to uh, connect with former uh, LE grads in the current class, as well as the supporters of the organization. Uh, finally, the Snoke County Veterans Association meeting was last week, uh, the city administrator now presented, uh, council member Mercer was there, and I, uh, those council members are very, from King County Council and Senator Tengra, uh, from the state legislature. Um, so I'll let them give, um, council member Mercer off the board, these report of the meeting during his time, I'll leave it at that. Uh, that concludes my report. Are there any council members that would like to speak? We have a
Um, so just a few quick ones. I sent an email to all the council, um, there is an S C A networking event on October sixteenth. The early bird pricing ends on Friday, um, so if you want to go, I suggested you could email me, and I did give a list uh, to our clerk to get it's all registered, um, so I'll wait until probably Thursday to do that, so if you could let me know, um, that would just help expedite that, um, really amazing speakers, so if we can make it, please do. Um, and then if he called for nominations for S C A, which is Sound Cities Association is coming up, I'm trying to remember the deadline, it's October, anyways, they imposed the email I sent you, um, if you click on the link I put in there, it's like nomination process, uh, the important key thing to remember about that is if two people from the same city apply to the same committee, they immediately disapprove of, um, so if you are thinking about applying, just let me and the mayor know so that we can coordinate that, and obviously we don't want to make duplicates. Um, just a reminder of our budget as the dispatch needs get going, if you have questions, send them to me with the subject line and budget questions, so I can like emulate them and some of the city administrator on Thursdays. And then, um, so since we had a person here talking about mufflers, and since we talked about it, and the city administration reported the so for that person, I would say check out the video from the committee in the hole. But I really just wanted to say that I really liked council member Mercer's video about posting a sign, and I was just curious something to think about, not to discuss now, but um, is can we add a muffler noise volume to the mobile speed unit or something like that? You know, just something at least that we give our awareness to it as a part of the other things that we're mentioning, or social media campaign or something like that. And then I would just also note, um, because I know council member Schaefer today is not giving up, and I don't think you should either, but you know, with the lobbyists coming on and us working on our legislative agenda, if we did find that that was something that we felt strongly about in the state level that should change to help us, that we could add that to the list.
That's all, that's all I have. But I'm just gonna be here, Shere.
Um, good to know. So, the intended agenda, which we'll confirm on the week, the city's legislative agenda um, is on the council agenda for October fifteenth. So we'll have just had the lobbyists here on the court to help kind of generate um, a process for how you all get your legislative agenda, and even, you know, on the table, I will just talk to them the day before, and then it'll be on the council agenda for fifteenth, um, I will, um, and what you want in your legislative vision, so a good opportunity.
Thank you.
So, sort of two quick updates, the, the mayor should have prefaced this one, I did attend, listen, call me out, I'm a governor in the association, city administrator, you know, I shared some of the information on how we can, special events, uh, and I, you know, appreciated, I think there was, that's a, that's a good opportunity to sort of share with the, uh, our community, um, um, representative Harry, uh, yet again, sort of the pitch, the grant, we either, uh, culture and, and some of the opportunities that have been offered after the first year, uh, and then, uh, we got, um, uh, various, uh, meetings, and it was a nice event, it was catered locally by Mina's, um, I know, we were sort of all triple booked, so, um, it was great that we got a, a good cross-representation. The other item I just might have touched on the night, you know, here pretends in an email, but it's been a busy month for it was certainly, uh, we had that sort of a two days, um, Friday and Saturday, uh, at Everett, uh, in person, which was nice to sort of regroup as a, as a broader cohort, uh, and, and I think we've both continued to come away with aha moments. Um, and then we actually had a, a three-hour session today, we have a three-hour session tomorrow, and then we have another in-person down in Tri-Cities, uh, earlier this month, so we're sort of squeezing quite a bit, and I mean, we're breaking up into two, so again, um, I think we're, we're getting our, our great collection of resources, and we'll need to schedule some time, sort of as one of the, the future calls, uh, once we can sort of do a report out.
Sorry, other council members, a pleasure to speak. Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Uh, first of this evening is the twenty twenty-four Evergreen Health State of Health here with Chris Bedesley, Chief Operating and Strategy Officer of Evergreen Health.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here, and we were happy to sponsor the Inside Mayor's Lunch, and we did a great job, I was there, and we were proud of our CEO, but we were really proud of the mayor as well, putting Yeah, thank you. Well, um, I'm really happy to be here tonight on behalf of Evergreen and our board directors. If we go to the next slide, um, we can see our, um, our, our Board of Commissioners on the next slide. Um, so we have elected officials as well, we're a public hospital, and so, uh, Virgil Snyder is our chair, and, um, you know, three of our positions are designated to certain geographic areas, and so for, for Duval, Woodinville, um, we have Nancy Stewart right there in the middle, she is the representative, she represents your area on behalf of the board, and then we have four positions that are at large. Susan Greathouse on the right-hand side is our newest commissioner, um, she, um, just joined the board, was appointed to replace somebody who stepped down, um, about a month ago, so we're happy to have her there. All right, next slide. All right, so let's talk about this slide, uh, it's our, it's our area, I'm gonna first talk about our service area, which is a little bit different than our district, so if you look at everything that's shaded in green or that, um, uh, orange color, salmon color, that's our, considered our total service area, and that means that about eighty percent of the zip codes from where our patients come are in those areas, um, and that's how the state defines service area. Um, but we do have two public hospital districts, and let's start on the bottom, if you see the, um, kind of the bright green line, uh, against the salmon color, that's the district that you're in, you can probably see Duval there, um, and, uh, we are, we have about, the total service area is about a million people, um, the district is about three hundred and thirty thousand people, um, in Duval, we're very happy to have Duval as, uh, a part of that, um, and then if we go up to the green area, um, at the turquoise outline, that is our, um, Snoke County Hospital District number two, so we have an affiliation with, we manage that hospital on behalf of that hospital, public hospital district, so that's Evergreen Health Monroe, and then we have Evergreen Health Parkland, um, in the King County Public Hospital District number one. And my focus tonight is on King County Public Hospital District one, the district that you're in, but, but having taken the back roads, I live on Union Hill in Redmond, um, and when I go to Monroe for meetings and I go the back way, I come right through Duval. I love the teriyaki, uh, right here on the street, pick that up, but, um, it's actually really pretty close from here to Monroe, so you, you might be interested in a future meeting, hearing more about that hospital as well. Let's, let's go to the next slide. So, we are proud to have a primary care officer in Monroe, uh, on Main Street, and we have three providers, um, medical providers that are seeing patients here. We, uh, sponsor about three thousand dollars a year in sponsorships here, including Duval Days, um, which we're happy to do and love participating in that, and then we are members of the Duval Chamber of Commerce, so we really try to stay connected with the communities where we serve. Next. So, I mentioned that we're a public hospital district, and what does that mean? And most hospitals in our state, um, that you're probably familiar with are, um, five hundred and three Cs, not-for-profit organizations, um, and so, um, you know, we are public hospital being, work similar to the school district or fire district, uh, we're considered a junior taxi district, you may be familiar with that term, and we're so, we're, you know, serving for health, wellness, and emergency needs, um, at, for our total service area, about a million people. And so of course, enough tax, uh, revenue comes to the hospital, and we'll see a breakdown of that on the next slide. So this is an example for someone who lives in, lives in Duval, about three percent of the taxes, property taxes paid in Duval would go to the hospital district, um, and that's just ahead of, um, here we can see, and so that's just under fifteen cents, um, per thousand dollars in the sets value, just a little ahead of the pork and, um, flat. Um, so we appreciate that, for total, um, in property taxes, we get Um so we appreciate that. For total um in property taxes, we get about twenty one million a year. About seventy percent of that goes for debt service for the hospital. Hospital buildings are expensive. Um and about thirty percent goes for programs and that's something our board is specifically um designated. A hundred percent of it could go for um. Operations that they have thirty percent set aside to invest back in the community. So we'll look at a little bit. At that in a little more detail. Um after we learn more about why it's important, the title of this talk is the state of healthcare um. And kind of how it affects us. So on the next slide, we'll look at what kind of where we are. And for in Washington State, ever since COVID, um you know, there were some relief efforts during COVID that helped hospitals. But um there were also some things that happened where a lot of nurses and other health professionals put their jobs and became travelers. They could make a lot more money. Going somewhere else for thirteen week assignment and going here for thirteen week assignment. And um so there were big vacancies. So then all hospitals were forced to hire travelers. Um. And you know, paying significantly more um than normal wages. Um then there was inflation as we all know about. And so uh we had pretty significant inflation. So the hospitals in Washington, you can say in twenty twenty two. Lost about two point one billion dollars. And it was a pretty scary time for hospitals. In twenty twenty three, it was a little bit better, only losing one point seven four billion. Uh and during that time, even between twenty twenty two and twenty three, our staff wage is one of sixteen percent. So we were definitely feeling um the inflationary pressures still. And uh of course, rent prices and other supplies have gone up. We are dependent on reimbursement from about fifty percent of our patients are paid through government payers, either Medicare or Medicaid. And um about forty five percent. Are paid through commercial insurance, but those insurance contracts are on two to three year contracts. And so. We could have big inflationary pressures and it may be a couple of years before we can renegotiate those contracts. And so we're doing that. Sometimes you might see that. We're in a termination period with Cigna or whatever, renegotiating always with the um. Intent to recontract with them, but um we've had some pretty tough negotiations um because we're just, that what we're getting from the insurance company is not keeping up with inflation. And we understand that they're trying to protect the interest of businesses and whatnot that are paying premiums or or are self insured. Um let's go to the next slide. So um. Benefits of being a public hospital. Uh we are locally governed by members of the community. Um. I don't know if any of you saw the news today with that overlay hospital in Bellevue is now been, it's now part of multi care health system. Um so it was an independent hospital, the last one um kind of in the area. And it is now part of the system. So all the hospitals that are for Evergreen are affiliated with the bigger system. Valley um is affiliated with University of Washington, overlay the multi care. Providence system, Virginia Mason is now part of the um. Uh Virginia Mason Press has been helped. Um so we are the kind of the lone independent of Skagit um has um. Is an independent public hospital as well, but that's a little bit further north. So um we're happy to be controlled. Um we think it's uh there's benefits to being governed locally. Uh your, our elected officials are elected. Um and so there's a say in who is representing the public hospital district. And then we have the tax revenue that is really helpful in terms of. Allowing us to remain independent, but also um allowing us to serve and invest back into the community. All right, so let's look at some of the things, the stats. So we have, we're three hundred, in Kirkland, we have a three hundred and fifty four bed hospital. So during COVID, we worked three hundred and eighteen. And the state very closely regulates how many beds a hospital can have. We have to go through what's called a certificate of leave process, so we can't decide where you have beds. We have to be approved by the state. Um. But during COVID, we were able to reactivate some of our um beds that have been um. You know, sunsetted. Um and we were able to get the certificate of need approval to keep those. So we went from three hundred and eighteen, three hundred and fifty four beds. Um we've, we are the. Um we deliver the second highest number of babies of any hospital in the state of Washington. Swedish, I think downtown is first and we are second, but uh for about forty five hundred. We have about sixteen hundred, sixteen thousand four hundred. Inpatient admissions, but people coming to the hospital uh just this summer night. Um we have a lot of home health patients. Many people don't know that we are the largest home health care provider. We have, so we talk about the hospital a lot, but we actually have twenty five hundred patients taking care out in the community in their home through our caregivers in Snohomish and King County. The largest. Um and about eighty percent of those patients are not Evergreen patients. We're serving all the um different hospital systems um through home health and hospitals. Uh the Kirkland Hospital has two emergency departments. You may say, well, how do you have two when you have just one hospital? But. We're allowed to have a freestanding emergency department. We have one in Redmond. Um and so. We uh have that and then we are, have been expanding our urgent care centers and we are up to eight. Uh with one in Monroe. Now that's probably the closest one to you. And of course, one in Redmond. Um we have um about three hundred and, we have an inpatient hospital center. So we have a fifteen bed hospital center. And I'm proud Everett closed theirs. So we're the only one in in the region um now. And um it's an important, if you ever have somebody go on, a relative go on hospitals, you know how important that service is. We have about three hundred and ninety employed physicians. So we have twelve hundred physicians on medical staff. So physicians can apply for for privileges and provide services and take care of patients at the hospital. But. Um sometimes there's gaps, certain specialties, and so we have to hire. Um and so we have about three hundred and ninety um employed physicians as part of our twelve hundred member medical staff. Twelve primary care clinics and about forty specialty practice. All right, you can see at the bottom some of the partnerships we have. Um our oncology is in partnership with Fred Hutch. UC Seattle Cancer Care Alliance, they changed their name. And I'm not abbreviating it, but they're uh that's their new brand, Fred Hutch. Um and uh. They provide all our medical oncology. We have Eastside Health Line, so we do have a partnership with Overlay. Um and we do contract. With employers uh to provide services through the Eastside Health Network. And then we also. Work together for cardiac services and neurosurgeons, uh neuros, um everything neurology related, including surgery. Um because it's too expensive for us to duplicate everything. And so we work together cooperatively to take care of the community and it's been very successful. That we're really proud of that. All right, we're also really proud on the next slide of some of the awards that we've received. We are, I think, are in our fourth year in a row of uh. Best um hospitals um in the United States. So there's about about five thousand hospitals in the United States and we are in the top fifty and have been for four years in a row. And um that's through health grades. Um that color continues over to the middle. I don't expect you to be able to read that, but it it goes into certain specialties where we're ranked. Highly um and um and um we have special designations around certain service lines. And then um if we go over to the right, we um get awards from the. American Cardiac Heart Association for Stroke Cardiac Care and um we're certified. Uh Ortho Center of Excellence. Uh down at the bottom, that green is a A for the frog. That's considered a hospital safety grade. It's an org, a watchdog organization that focuses for hospital safety because sometimes. Things happen in the hospital, you know, the operations on the wrong side or, you know, those sorts of things that we've all heard about on the news. And. And so this organization really looks at profit and how we make sure patients stay, safe. Um and then CMS, you know, it's uh down there on the bottom, right? Um. That's the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services. It's through the federal government and it's actually the hardest one to get. We are a five star um CMS hospital and we have been since the ratings came out uh through the government. Um and we're the one of the few in Washington state that have a five star and have been every year since the awards came in. All right, next slide. Let's talk about how we take that. Remember I said there's twenty one million in in tax revenue that comes to the hospital, about um three, thirty percent is set aside for programs. So that's about six point four million. And uh part of that is going to support uh youth mental health. I appreciate your proclamation for mental health um week coming up. And um we have been working with the schools, trying to get at the issues that sometimes we see in our emergency department. And so. We're working with the North Shore School District. And with uh therapists and um we are um in one of the high school and we have. Participated in youth uh mental health passports. We are involved in geriatric care. Um and if you have an elderly relative, you know how important that is. Um and we have a special clinic for that. With Jerry, staff by Jerry Driftons. And then we're, uh we support the North Shore Senior Center. And uh Kirkland's a steppers program for older adults. Um so those are some things we're doing for seniors. And then social determinants of health. We know that. If people are um not able to, if they're not housed or they're not bad, it impacts their healthcare and many other types of social determinants of health. But uh so we have a community healthcare access team that really works with people. It's known as CHAP. Um but we really help people get plugged into programs for funding that are available. Um and we have um, we support that through um. Our levy funds. And then end of life care, I mentioned our hospice care center. It does not break even. So um. We do support that financially through um the uh levy funds and palliative medicine. Um that uh. Something you may not be familiar with, but people who have chronic conditions, um sometimes uh. If their quality of life improves dramatically, they get involved with a palliative care doctor who really addresses. Um not necessarily curing what they have, but um making their quality of life better. It's different from hospitals. All right, let's go to the next slide. Just a couple more to go. Um we want to hear from our community. So we have a community advisor program. And so we have probably about thirty five to forty um or so. People that are all throughout the district, hospital district. Um and they are really good um people to press the balance ideas off. Uh for them to go back out and share with the community what's going on at the hospital. And we meet with them regularly throughout the year. In fact, we just had a meeting with them um last Wednesday night. Um and then employee volunteering, we have um our leaders are all um out in the community every year volunteering and we. Had a great, uh we put in a number of hours um of service, um at least the ones that are track. There's some for more than that. Um so over a thousand hundred hours in twenty twenty three. We provide sponsorships, um hundred and ten thousand recording community events. Across our service area and we have local relationship. We're involved in chambers. And community based that organizations within our local cities. And here's some examples of some of the workout in the community. You can see on the next slide. Um uh Rick, one of my colleagues is here tonight. It's in a number of these pictures. Um so a lot of different events where we're um out in the community participating and. And that was in twenty twenty three. Well, I think that twenty twenty four, we were pretty active this summer as well. All right, um the final slide I have a four questions, if there are any um that's to do with just kind of a look back to the. To the hospital in nineteen seventy two. So you know, there was an old hospital in downtown Kirkland and. I think the people in the pastoral lands of Ponem Lake at the time, um in the sixties, said, we want a new hospital. We we want to have something closer to where we live and. Um so they decided to form the cap. Public Hospital District and um built that hospital that opened in nineteen seventy two. And so that that's where we were and on that same land, this is where we are today, as you can see over on the right. So we've had a lot of growth. And we're pleased that we're not just on that campus, but we're at office buildings all throughout, including the one I showed a picture of here in Duval. So. That's our update for tonight. Happy to take any questions.
I just had a question that wasn't specifically reflected up here, but but you know, obviously a smaller community and we appreciate having those here in town. Just in terms of sort of the need versus the supply perspective, I know you've. Got a, I think you mentioned there are three physicians on staff here. I know sometimes. You're getting in as a challenge and I would be curious, you know, how your own internal analysis um correlates to sort of the community need versus the staffing.
Yeah. Every three years, we do something called the physician needs assessment. And so we look at our areas and say, you know, based on the population, based on the number of other providers. Because we don't have to do everything. Other, there's room for other um providers as well outside of Evergreen Health. Um we we look at the need by specialty of what the the need is and it helps us determine what is our recruitment plan going to be over the next three years. Uh for these specialties. Um and um of course, we have to offset that with finances because it's really expensive to open it. If we need, like if we're at the brink of needing a new clinic or a second clinic in the city, um that makes it a lot more expensive. Um. So we've done an analysis and I don't remember what the number is for Duval, but um. We've looked at all of our existing clinics and said. Um okay, how much room is there? How many providers could there be? And let's say they could have five here. Then we'd say, okay, we have room for two more. So you know, we don't need to worry about getting a clinic space, but we need to. Figure out how we're gonna start the community by filling out those additional spots. That's an example. I don't know if those were real numbers, but. Um but that's the type of an office we do. And we, so for primary care, for example, we know what our space capacity is to uh providers. And then we look at our community health means. I mean, our physician needs assessment, they, how many? What is the demand according to that? Then we also know that um. Roughly every physician, every primary care physician can handle a panel of about two thousand patients. So that's another way that we look at it. And we also look at other doctors that are here. Are they full or do they still have capacity on their scheduled seating location? So if um and we, we do look at something that um is a kind of probably a term you've never heard of before, but. It's called the next third available. So if you were to call for an appointment and they said, we can get you in this afternoon, we just had a cancellation. Okay, that means they have one available appointment. Because it was cancellation. So we look at when's the next third available? How many days out is the next third available? Because then you get around that. Oh, we just had a cancellation. And it would be misleading to say, oh, yeah, you can get in right away. Um so we look, when is the next third available appointment? And we track that and we have holes and we do need to get that number down. It's. Access to primary care and to other stuff is a problem in the area and it's across the country. It's actually a lot worse than some other areas, but um it is a metric that we follow and. That's probably the most important metric. It's like, how long is it really going to take for you to get in when you need to get in?
No, that's super helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a similar question to that. You had also just your thoughts on potentially. Having uh urgent care or extended hours. I I'm sure you drove out here. Do you know how far away it is? Probably really how. So we're, you know, at least a half an hour away. Um from really anywhere.
Yeah.
Um and you're. Fully exposed. So I, and even just expanding. Um I hope you only go to Evergreen clinic and sometimes it can be. Uh so yeah, a lot of people moving here. So anyway, just kind of curious if I have thoughts about um.
Yeah, our urgent care centers um have been really successful. Um and so we we, it's something, it's an area where we're really growing and looking for next areas. Um. And so we um, you know, we need a certain amount of traffic to 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 open one. Um. So we'll take that back, that Duval would like an urgent care. So we'll, we'll go. Take that to the team and and chew on it. And so we did, like I said, open one in Monroe and it's been very successful. It's really exceeded um volume expectations. And so they would like us to do a second one somewhere up in that area. But um. Yeah, it could make, it makes sense to do one. Down this way. Yeah, you know, a lot of the things that we have to do with, um we find that urgent cares do better when they're properly with primary care. And with urgent care, we need to have x-ray. And so and and we use certified x-ray technicians. Some medical offices will use a medical assistant to take x-rays. We don't do that. Um and so it becomes expensive overhead to have to have brain pain and a technician. So you have to have a certain amount of volume to make that work. Um and so if there's already a primary care that has that and allow it, it's easier to do that. But. We will look into that. Yeah. But I also heard they are extended office hours. So yeah.
Well. Uh councillor Shaker.
One more common question, but uh I, you know, I I am under the very strong impression in. Up in the park and I don't experience the quality of healthcare. Here in this particular area is actually very good. I think part of that is uh due to Evergreen Health and uh it itself, the hospital, uh your uh. Uh various uh. Uh providers you have around, including uh here as well. And uh talking to friends that have in other parts of the country. That was so, you know, so good. So yeah, I said, I know it's a problem here, you know, in with getting uh. Appointments and things like that, but it could be a lot worse uh and it is worse in in other parts of the of the country. So. So uh and I've been using Evergreen Health myself. So I moved here about seven years. I've been very, very pleased.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that. We will definitely share that with everything.
Just a quick thank you for all of this. It was great presentation.
Well, thank you. Thanks for having me. Be happy to come back anytime. And it is a long drive from the hospital. It's further than I thought. It's a lot closer to my house.
For probably ten years now, again, um the service and care is absolutely fantastic and the connectedness of the services as well. Um and I think it's a real gem that we still have a public hospital district that's independent, um as those continue to go away throughout the country. Which really guarantees access to healthcare for everyone. Um and anyone who needs it. And that's such a huge benefit. Uh I very much appreciate the work.
Thank you. Thank you for supporting the hospital.
So. I'll be right back. Um I invented the urgent care in Monroe. Beautiful facility. It's hardly getting ready. And I can vouch for, I love. And I can vouch for, I love Monroe Hospital. I'm actually at my youngest there. And it was September, and I was the only one in maturity, and I felt like clean. I had, I mean, there was a weight on me, but it was wonderful. Twenty-five years ago, you know?
And now you know why we don't have emergency services there anymore. But I'm glad it was a good experience. We're always looking at what services should we be adding to Monroe. And by the way, the latest is ENT, so we're having here notes and reports, or um, and we've got a lot of, you know, surgeons, not the surgeons, but some stuff, so, and all that. You know, uh, hands, different stuff, such as, and, um, uh, GI, and we're in GI there. Yeah. Happy to to keep attending. Thank you for the feedback. You all been wonderful.
So Julie Holmes, Director of.
Good evening, Council. I also brought the Executive Director of Monroe.
Very nice to meet you. Oh, Sky Valley Y M T A. Uh, Julie has got the honor of being our school's child care director and camp director, so, uh, she does not give her many vacations around the, around the year. So, um, we're here to talk about, uh, our, our camp programs, and I feel something really great for coming in a month with a camper that we had in, in August. Um, but let's, let's go to the next slide here. And, uh, the overview of the, of the history, when we have emerged from the pandemic, we, uh, we all unified in the start of our sixth Y M C S County branches and had, uh, began new sports programming. Um, and the Monroe Spark Valley Y M C, uh, you know, has a good contingent of participants and coaches that have come from, we've talked, we have heard from many participants, like, they like the ease of the drive into Monroe, um, and love that we're doing sports for all age groups, um, from rookie sports, which is three years up to, you know, high school levels for some of the sports. Um, in fact, this year, one of our youth, uh, development volunteers of the year was a coach, um, from Duval, coaches like football, soccer and basketball. He does a little bit of everything for us. Um, so why bring up the sports is, um, this outdoor camp inventor started with an email from our youth sports director to residents in Duval, talking, hey, registration for basketball is starting. And then Rita, um, who works for the city, reached out to us and said, hey, how could you like, maybe come out and look at, you know, running outdoor camp into the ball? And, uh, we looked at each other and we're like, okay, we're in Stonewish County, it's three miles into King County, like, we'll figure out how we can make this, make this work. So that process started, uh, with Rita early February, um, which led to us coming out and doing a tour of McCormick Park. Another in early March, or not, it was nice and rainy, and, and everything was, it was fantastic. Um, and from there, we used the community survey, which, um, the city and, uh, IT and marketing was very helpful with getting that we're not so weak, it kind of gave, I think, what's the interest from the community out here? And I'd say after the first day, we had well over a hundred responses to that, to that survey, which when you send out a survey through, you know, office forms or Google Docs, you never know what you're gonna get. So to get that kind of response, um, in the first, you know, day, you know, let alone the first week was very impressive. So it clearly showed there was interest. There was a wants, uh, there was a need. Um, so we solidified, we, um, opened up camp the week of July sixth down at McCormick Park and ran seven weeks worth of outdoor day camp um, down in the park, um. It was amazing, and we were one of the few outdoor camps that had access to, uh, water, you know, out there, which, uh, Julie's gonna talk about later in the presentation. One of our goals is to keep people out of Evergreen Paris. Uh, not so, very, uh, uh, you know, very, you know, strict and stringent lifeguards out there, um, operating. So, um, that's the history and the background of how this, uh, this collaboration started, and you're very appreciative for uh, being able to be out at McCormick Park, um, this, this last summer. You never know how the first year of a new camp or program, um, is going to go. And I was elated with the feedback, the registrations, um. It exceeded my expectations, frankly, which was awesome. That was a testament to the staff and collaborating with the city, the marketing department, spreading the word, even the Riverview School District was, uh, uh, was by our side in that, marketing that. So, next slide.
All right, so my camp, um, throughout my experiences, and I grew up going to Y camp in different parts of the country, and not moved to Washington until I was an adult. Uh, but can't change his lives. We offer camp programs to make our children better people and to create future leaders. When kids have a camp experience, it can change the direction of their life and create hope for their future. If you had told me eighteen years ago that I was gonna be a camp director, I would laugh at you, but that's all right. Youth plants, uh, who play outside are happier, better at paying attention and less anxious. Spending time in nature builds confidence. In nature, there can be less structure than most types of indoor play, allowing you to choose how they interact with nature around them. This gives them practice managing their own actions and encourages creativity and imagination. And especially as we see more and more, um, statistics of how many hours kids are on tablets or in front of screens, getting them outside and, um, getting them to experience the outdoors on their own. Um, next slide, please. So our camp programs are developed around the camp goals of relationship, achievement, and belonging. Impacts of camp can create stronger community by strengthening families and building relationships, and we saw that as, um, students from the Riverview School District, from Cherry Valley and Stillwater got to know each other. We had a couple who were transferring to Stillwater, so they learned, learned a few names and met some kids they would be going to school with. Um, a sense of community belonging, critical thinking, providing new experience, engaging confidence. And here are some of our, uh, kids from our outdoor day camp. The first picture is when, you know, the first week of camp was the week it hit like ninety-seven, so we're just, we were, anything we can do with water? Um, and sticking to the shade. And then that last picture, um, after one of the, uh, music nights down at McCormick Park, somebody had started to build a fence, I guess, and our kids decided they were going to pack. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so every week throughout the summer, we do, I think, for weeks where parents are asked to let us know how we're doing, and then they can send in some verbatim's, um, some quotes or whatever their camper told them, and these are actually the verbatim's for our outdoor day camp. And my grandson's words, can I go next? Sorry. He loved every day. He talked about the things he did or learned every day. He loved archery and playing in the river. He also made new friends. My child looks forward to attending, and they enjoy the adventures and the activities they did throughout the day. My daughter is loving it. Thank you for offering this type of programs for our children. And it gives them opportunities to participate in social activities to further improve their social skills and problem solve. He also, has also made new friends, which has given him a sense of belonging and made him feel important. So a lot of great verbatim's that came directly from our outdoor day camp parents. Uh, next slide, please. So these are just some of the pictures that we took, um, from our from the summer. Archery is a huge hit as we're swimming, uh, swimming in the river. They loved it. Maybe not the last week, when it was like sixty degrees outside, but. Um, and then also the one picture, the Upper Rocky Corner is from our lunch with the camper that some of our city council members came to, so thank you again for coming. Um, so just utilizing all of her parts of the depot park and McCormick Park, it'd be great fun.
Yeah, no, laughing, you see those pictures in the, the bottom left, there are the kids, you know, in the, in the river, um. It, it's always, you know, run on our side of it, and I know there, you know, parent side of it, when you're turning your kids over to camp, and there's gonna be water. Um, it can always kind of be stressful. Uh, we had our, like, our aquatic tracker was, uh, was there. Every time we were out there, um, probably a week prior to me knowing we were going to water, um, our guards came out and did drills, in fact, it's water rescues, because it's different being in a, in a river versus, um, doing drills in a normal, normal pool. All right, so they were able to kind of get the lay of the, the, the land and the river, so to speak, find different spots, and the, and the ghettos never really went beyond where the, the guards, multiple guards were stationed. And we had several comments from parents too, um, saying, okay, I was a little nervous, I didn't say anything, but taught in action, and everybody had, had fun. And I think that's also one of the, uh, the cool things about next year now that, uh, we have an idea of what to expect. Um, I think the water days can happen, uh, you know, much more frequently, because we went in conservatively this year with, uh, days in the water. Missed anything there?
Yeah. Uh, next slide, please. So what could summer twenty twenty-five bring? Um, earlier marketing of camp leading to more campers, an additional time for Duval families to plan their summer. Um, so when we decided we were going for this, it was early March. By the time we got everything ready, it was late March, um, where most camp programs had already been, as well as our own, had been open for registration since February. Um, so we were kind of on that back, back end deal. Um, additional weeks, also, um, being able to start that first week after school gets out rather than we do in some July. Employment opportunities for Duval residents. One of our goals would be to partner with a high school to see if they have, um, high schoolers that are looking for positions. And then using Duval vendors for potential enrichment activities. Um, expanding River View's, Anthony alluded to it a little bit, um, some of our other outdoor day camp sites. One of them, it does, and that's one thing we're willing, looking to explore. Um, it's not just being able to swim in the water, but also to have some, as well. And then continuing to strengthen, um, the outdoor education offer um, or the campers. Um, are there any questions?
The overall, it was a fantastic summer, uh, out there. You never know what to expect, uh, with the first super program, and it went fantastic, and considering we, we all really, everybody put this together relatively quick, because, uh, you started planning next year's camp, what the day after camp's end last week? Okay.
Great, and then Councilor Rose. So when I think of our camp, um, kids, I think playoffs, but when I came to lunch with the camper, it was immediately obvious at home that the organization was, the kids were clearly having a amazing time. Uh, I told you both this when I was there, but I am one of those parents, very nervous around water, my kids are very strict about water safety. And I happened to be on the beach one day, enjoying it with my family when they all went down there, and I was so impressed, and I would have completely been comfortable with my children in your care, uh, the perimeter of lifeguards, and it just involves the party day. And it was great to see the kids enjoying the water on such a hot day, um, and yeah, just wonderful program. I appreciate the lunch opportunity as well. It was great to see how you utilize the facility, so thanks for what you did.
Yeah, I was just gonna call out on the side that whether it's intentional or not, the fluorescent yellow shirts, you know, also make identifying.
I was gonna ask, you know, you, you provided a little bit of information on the number of attendees and areas that were from curious like age range, I think, and there was sort of a multi-age program and, and creating activities for different groups. I think there can be some mentoring or sort of play off of each other, but also some challenges with that. And I'm just curious what the range is.
The, the reach where the camp is open for rising first graders, middle to rising sixth graders. Um, I would say the majority of the campers were extended to about um, we did when we had, um, most of our weeks had about fifteen to twenty students, foot campers, and when we had those fifteen to twenty, we typically split them to the younger campers and the older campers, um, particularly for like archery. Uh, because the older campers wanted to do it much longer than our adults. And, uh, wanted to get the pool dive versus us trying to get the little ones to just feel the, shoot the air. Well, um, so we did scaffold different activities depending on.
Thank you.
Councilmember. Yeah, I was really excited to see that people can possibly integrate local and return members. And, um, I know we had a, a someone who put on a little Lego camp, utilized the depot in the past, so that might be someone, and we have an art center that's on really amazing programs. So I was just excited to hear about that. And I also, um, was able to enjoy the lunch, and it was just amazing. And I've always wanted to have a camp here in town, and I think we tried it a little bit one time, and, um, so to see this be a success, and that you want to come back next year. Exciting, thank you.
Yeah, no doubt, Rita, you know, the amazing throughout, uh, you're running your campus, uh, and, you know, contacting with, um, you know, various stuff at the depot, and you know, hey, where does this go? This broke, but you, you were, you were the main thing. Uh, so thank you, Rita, for having me.
Well, thank you all. It's been a wonderful day on the campus. The yellow shirts remind me of the, reminds you, Karen, my daughter, she's gonna just, she decided for the San Diego. And they wear those same shirts, so, um, knowing that they work. Sure, and a big safety tool. But, but thank you for everything, and definitely looking forward to next summer's camps.
Thank you for having us.
Um, our most presenting is the debate on the economic development element of our comprehensive plan. That'll be Jennifer Cannon and Jennifer White, and, uh, Representative Community Development, our class.
Uh, good evening again, Mayor Campbell and members of the community. Um, I just want to make sure that the chat goes online. So, uh, Jennifer, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I see Cam. Thank you. Why don't you go ahead and get started?
Excellent. Um, go ahead and go to the next slide. Right, as mentioned, my name is Jennifer Cannon. I'm a senior project manager at Echo Northwest. And we've been partnering with A H B L and the city staff to help update the economic development element along with the housing element as a part of the, uh, periodic update of the comprehensive plan. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, and for today, uh, we wanted to provide a bit of an overview of the process of updating the plan and a little bit of background about the public engagement that helped inform the updates to the plan and the data analysis findings that helped inform many updates. We basically looked at the current conditions and, and did a, a full analysis of the best available information to help us understand the economic conditions and opportunities, uh, for the city of Duval. Um, lastly, I wanted to walk through the, um, strengths and opportunities and challenges that a lot, a, a lot of that analysis helped inform and the public engagement helped inform. And, um, then the last part will be, uh, uh, an overview of the proposed updates for, uh, the economic development element. Uh, we've been spending a lot of time tweaking various policies and goals to really help, uh, recalibrate the, the, um, chapter to really reflect what the city would like to see happen. And, um, there's a lot of great changes, uh, to the, to the plan, and there's a lot of, um, great upcoming work that, uh, will, will kind of be triggered from these updates. Um, if you want more detail on the exact policy changes and, 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 um, the specifics, I recommend looking at the, um, for the, uh, in the staff report, there's a full, uh, document with all the changes and, uh, shown in detail. Um, I'll go over just, you know, the high level changes, um, but many of the changes are just tweaks just to make it more relevant to today's conditions. There's a lot of, um, policies are a little bit old, you know, it hasn't been updated for a while. So we took a really, uh, good look at where there needed to be updates to, to be more relevant to today's conditions. So go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, and, and this plan update process um, has been underway for about a year. We've had, uh, various community engagement and, and, uh, data analysis, and we've met with staff to go over where there are opportunities for, um, helpful updates. Um, the, the updates are informed by a, a mix of qualitative and quantitative findings. And, um, a- also they're informed by a lot of the updates that have been in the region, and with the King County plan updates and the Puget Sound Regional Council, uh, vision updates, and so there's been a lot. And so there's been a lot of, a lot of different, um, plans that help inform these updates. Um, as a part of this process, uh, we had to do a full data analysis and look at a, a new planning horizon for up to twenty forty-four for the next twenty years. So we had to really think about what, what kind of changes we could anticipate and how can we facilitate the changes we'd like to see in the city. Um, and we had a draft in a, a final, um, updates as a part of this process. Right now we're in the draft update stage. And as a reminder, you probably know this, but this, this chapter is one of eight chapters that are in your comprehensive plan. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So it's important to kind of, uh, review what the purpose of the economic development element is. Essentially it provides a roadmap for the economic vitality of the city. And it helps to, um, make the city more financially, uh, sustainable and to help enhance the quality of life for the communities. And it's also to help support the growth of existing and new businesses. And, um, also to balance and diversify the, the, uh, different industrial and commercial and residential activities in the city. And essentially to help to revitalize the, in, uh, the, the downtown, the old town area and help it to become more sustainable and, and thriving. And essentially the city is limited, you know, what they can do to help this. But the city provides a very important role in providing infrastructure and, and creating a setting that is attractive for businesses and employers. The city can adjust the, the zoning and regulations and permitting process to support businesses. Um, there's some, you know, grant opportunities that the city has. And a, a big thing the city can do is support partnerships with the chamber, rotary, or other organizations and nonprofits that can help support economic development in, in the area. Go and go to the next slide. So as a part of this process, we solicited input from, uh, the community businesses and stakeholders. The activities included community surveys, open house, tabling at community events. There was a, uh, steering committee meeting and planning commission meetings where we went over a lot of the, the changes and the opportunities in the city of Duval. We heard about the, the, a strong support for, uh, small local businesses and support for the old town and, and improving that area, making it more vibrant. And then we heard a lot of input about making sure that, that the tourism is right sized for the small city of Du- Duval and doesn't get too out of, out of, um, uh, proportion for, for the local setting. Go ahead, go to the next slide. So also as a part of this process, we did a, a thorough economic analysis and created an economic profile. Looks at the existing conditions and opportunities. And I, I'm sure I presented this slide before, but some of the key findings are here. You know, we looked at different trends in the demographic and how the community is changing and changes in employment, changes in commuting and changes in the businesses and industries locating in Duval. And we looked at the changes in taxable sales and income and more. Uh, a few of the key highlights is that there are about around, uh, five residents to every job that is in Duval. Duval is largely a commuter community. Uh, and many of the commuters travel around half hour for, um, getting to their place of employment. And the, the, one of the trends that we found that was quite interesting is that there is a large share of, of the workforce that, uh, is working remotely. And this has grown over the, the last decade. Uh, approximately one-third of the workforce is working remotely, um, at home. And, uh, another key finding was that Duval has a large share of workforce aged adults. It's quite large, um, compared to other cities that we've worked in. Uh, sixty-four percent of the population is aged eighteen to sixty-four. And an- another key finding, um, was that the median household income is at a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. It has increased, uh, over the last decade by fifty-one percent. So, um, there's quite a lot more high income, um, residents in, in Duval. Go ahead and go to the next slide. As a part of this economic profile analysis, we also looked at the job target that King County has set for Duval to achieve by twenty forty-four. And we went through a capacity analysis to look at the land zoned for employment type uses. And, uh, the city Duval is a little short of employment land, um, that is, uh, uh, set to that job target. And so currently the city is considering ways to adjust the zoning, um, with a possible, uh, South UGA urban growth area expansion to allow for, um, a minor expansion of employment land to help provide enough capacity for jobs. Uh, this topic will be discussed further in the forthcoming land use element, uh, presentation and discussion. Go ahead and next slide. And as a part of the work, uh, we summarize a lot of the findings through this, what we call SWOT announces, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges. And, uh, this is, you know, an ongoing kind of exercise that should be done every so often for the city. So it can really help to understand what kind of challenges the city is facing that they might possibly be able to resolve or address. And, uh, some of the key strengths that we found in Duval is that there's great community events. It's a very strong connected community. There's a really strong downtown area that has had a lot of investment in the last decade, especially with new sidewalks and, and different public arts. Uh, there's, it's an attractive community. You can see that with the, you know, the population growth that you've had. And there's a strong support for local businesses. A lot of, um, a lot of people had mentioned that, that the need to really support the, the local businesses. Um, and there are few retail vacancies in, in the, uh, city. So there's a strong market there for retail. And then there's an active chamber and helpful partners. Some of the challenges that the city has are being isolated, a little bit far off to the east and not many high paying jobs in the city. There's a shortage of affordable workforce housing in the city. And there's a lack of certain services that could be needed. And people are having to go other places to go for the services such as healthcare or, um, other types of, of needs that are, are not going to be located in Duval. The service economy is, is, uh, pretty, uh, vibrant. But yet many of the workers live outside the city that are, um, helping to, uh, work in, in that service economy. And then there's a, um, you know, a need to be careful with maintaining the local atmosphere in Duval. Like that's a, that's a challenge to always consider. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And so the economic development element basically has seven overarching goals that address a, a variety of topics. The, the goals address employment, businesses, partnerships, educational opportunities and employment land. There's a, a goal addressing the old town area and the quality of life and agriculture, ecotourism and economic development planning in general and implementation of, um, these goals and policies. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So I'm going to touch on some of the key updates that were, uh, made for the, um, uh, this chapter that are proposed. Uh, equity is a very big theme that, uh, we focused on with a lot of the updates. This is, uh, emphasized in the Pugilist Sound Regional Council's Vision Twenty Fifty. There's a central emphasis on supporting equity and a strong economy. And they gave us a lot of ideas for ways we can help to support those equitable outcomes. So there was some, uh, goals and policies were just a- adjusted to, for example, support small locally owned businesses that create more diverse jobs and that help to support minority and women owned businesses and other cultural and ethnic communities such as the tribes, Snow Palmy. Um, King County also has a strong emphasis on, uh, supporting equity and centering equity. And so there, and there's a particularly need with housing to, to avoid, um, discrimination with housing and to help, um, remedy some of the past discrimination that has occurred with zoning and land use and, um, and housing. So go ahead and go to the next slide. Another key update is related to local businesses. There's several policies that were updated to help support home-based businesses and code adjustments to increase the flexibility for businesses that are wishing to expand at existing locations. Uh, there's a new policy to support business growth that is associated with information technology like industrial manufacturing services and, and, and services supporting environmental sustainability and, um, tourism, especially ecotourism. And there was an emphasis to help support businesses that are providing cost of, of living wages so that people can live in the community comfortably and, and, um, be able to thrive. Go ahead and go to the slide thirteen. Next one. Um, and as men, oh, sorry. Oh, yeah. Uh, go ahead and go to the next, their, their earlier slide. There you go. Um, and then there was some changes related to the need for employment land, like I mentioned. Uh, there was, uh, some, some policies that looked at, uh, creating new sub-area plans for a couple of areas in the city. Uh, the areas identified were midtown to Big Rock Road and Big Rock Road to Twenty-seventh. And, and these sub-area plans are really helpful because you can get into more detail than you can with a comp plan with looking at different opportunities and ways to add infrastructure and to support, uh, the, the residents and businesses in those, in those areas. And so those are really great, great tools to, uh, support. Um, and that will happen in the future as a part of, of this, um, comp plan update. And then there was a, a goal, a, a policy that was added to ensure there's adequate supply of land to support employment uses and meet the job targets as mentioned earlier. And exploring the use of, um, the addition of a south urban growth area. And this would require working with King County. And then there was another policy that looked at, um, code changes to ensure mixed uses would allow for commercial and retail development. Just allowing for more mixture of uses, um, that might viably happen in the city. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And then a, a very big key update to this, uh, chapter was to call for the update of the downtown sub-area plan. Um, on the right, you can see an image of the cover for the existing plan that was adopted in two thousand and four. So it's about twenty, twenty years old. And it's a really, you know, it's a great time to update this plan to kind of recalibrate the vision and, and add some more actions that might be relevant for today. Uh, to help really enhance the downtown and continue, uh, to make it a thriving, uh, community space. I mean, there might be some opportunity for some more third places and adding some more, um, creative district kind of, um, uh, economy, uh, enhancements i- in this area. Uh, there was also another policy that was added to support the farmer's market infrastructure investments and to work on prioritizing what that might look like. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And then, uh, there was some updates related to quality of life and ecotourism. Uh, there's some updates to really emphasize collaborating with partners such as the cultural commission to support community events and infrastructure, celebrating the heritage and strengthening the community branding. It's really important to continue those efforts. There's been a lot of great efforts with public art, like I mentioned. And it's, it's important to keep those up and, uh, and make sure that Duval has a unique identity that people can be proud of. And then, um, there was also some updates to the policy to support small scale lodging, to make sure that that was something that was available to help support the ecotourism industry in, in the city. Going to the next slide. And this is our, the last slide that I have. Um, another part of the update was to look at implementation of the economic plan. Um, this is the part that I'm really passionate about. I think it's really important to have an implementation plan. Otherwise, you know, what do you see happen if, if there isn't, there, there isn't actual next steps in a work plan that is created? And so there's a policy that calls to create, um, an economic development strategic plan that will actually have some, um, support for actual steps to be made. Maybe get some support from an, a staff member that is dedicated to, uh, implementing that strategic plan. And then it's also would call for some more monitoring, uh, reporting on this every one to three years and looking at key metrics to see how well the city is doing in, um, job creation, business growth, tax revenue. There's some flexibility in what you're measuring. But it is helpful to kind of look at that every, um, one to three years and celebrate the good things that have happened in the city. And it's important to celebrate the projects that have unfolded and, and, um, that, that is really helping the community. And then there was a policy to look at a grant program for local businesses and work with a chamber. There was a facade grant program and, and that's, um, building off that. And then, um, there is a new implementation tools and strategy section to help build that positive momentum, like I was mentioning, towards really achieving some of these goals and policies as, as much as possible to really help create a more balanced and healthy economy. And so that is our, uh, updates in a nutshell. I think, uh, Laura, I wanted to, uh, provide some closing comments and some, um, discussion questions. Thank you.
So thank you for allowing us to come and get a presentation. Hopefully you had an opportunity to review the more detailed, um, goals and policies. We'll be coming back a couple more times to talk about economic development. This is just really showing you kind of briefly some of the new pieces that we're looking at that were based on input from like the survey, um, our advisory groups, your staff, our consultant. And so if you have any questions or comments now, we can answer those. And then as we start to complete the task and, and developing all that, we can make sure we include those. And address any questions.
Yeah, I looked through, I wasn't sure if I saw it back. Maybe it was in one of the, um, overview. But, um, I've heard a lot from people in the community, um, providers and people who tend to find space. Or, you know, maybe everyone is having that problem that specifically, you know, maybe a, uh, one-room, two-room type space for a therapist and investment advisor, accountant, uh, just something like that. That would, um, really provide a space for people who would be here potentially to have a. And I also think with our growing city, we need those services. Um, and then also, um, I, I hear and I agree that, um, this town really wants to maintain that unique, uh, small town independent business type atmosphere where we aren't moving in, you know, chickens and things like, uh, things like that. And so, um, you know, maybe smaller spaces that would be affordable for these smaller businesses as they get started. Um, really there's, there's just very little availability. And I, I think what's a little bit difficult for me as I kind of think through this plan is I think we want a pretty good plan, even, you know, the last plan. And the problem is it's just not, there just isn't interest in, um, you know, we even have development agreements that, uh, you know, say, well, we let you build the house. Maybe you're supposed to build the commercial. It's just part of the agreement and it's still just like dragging the feet. Just almost like a, um, I, I don't understand it. And so just getting over that hump, I feel like we always have these good ideas and plans. And if the builders don't come and build it, what do you do? Um, so anyway, I, I think that is my struggle is, um, it could be that Duval is location wise, um, is going to be a struggle for some of these things. So I don't know exactly what my question is, but, um, I'm just looking for really realistically what we could expect under our circumstances. Do. Is there, I mean, I'm assuming you work with other bedrooms, you are like bedroom communities, um, far away from transportation. So warehouses, industrial, all those things are going to be really tricky. We're, we're pretty isolated. So I don't know realistically what, um, what you've seen happen in cities with this scenario.
Well, I can, I can just say that, um, you know, the economy and the market has been kind of crazy lately. So that's been, um, difficult for a lot of, um, communities is that, uh, you know, interest rates now that, now they're going down a little bit, but, um, the cost of construction is, has gone up and the labor costs, uh, for construction labors has gone up. And so right now is kind of, it's hard to understand what's going to happen in the future. Um, but I, like, compared to some other communities that I've worked in, uh, you're doing pretty good in terms of having really low vacancy rates with retail. And, uh, and I've heard that there hasn't been very many, um, uh, vacant, uh, retail spaces that have stayed that way. So there does seem to be a market for more retail to be located in the city. And like you said, like smaller businesses, um, in terms of like whether Trader Joe's, I hear that from a lot of communities, when is Trader Joe's going to come to my community? That's, they have their own business model and they have certain, you know, requirements. And so it's, it's hard to predict whether you can ever attract a Trader Joe's. Uh, you know, they, they, you know, they have their own considerations. But, um, there definitely seems like there, there is a, a promi- a promising, um, economic growth in terms of retail, um, in the community, um, that it's becoming a desirable place for, um, people to locate. So I think, I think it's pretty hopeful. Um, but I, I would, you know, right now it's a little, it's, it's hard to understand exactly what's going to happen. You know, COVID and all that was very impactful.
I'm just going to add really quickly to respond a little bit too is one of what we hear from builders that want to come in and build, you know, small mixed use only, small commercial only. They get the price per square foot to build it and then to rent out is challenging for a smaller boutique type of, um, business. And so that's probably one of our big challenges. But one thing that we are going to do to kind of address more of the mixed use challenge we've had where we're not seeing the development of the commercial component is we are updating our zoning code to require it to be concurrent moving upwards of any new mixed use project. is we are updating our zoning code to require it to be concurrent moving upwards of any new mixed use projects. That will be a requirement.
When you say concurrent, it would mean they would only be able to be issued so many housing permits until they build the commercial, like you would just lock it down.
Yeah. So not, so right now what we have is we allow them to defer it through a development agreement. We only require them to come from the development application. So we're going to put that script, create a threshold. And they'll have to build, they'll have to actually come in and go as well. That, that could be challenging as well because that's not necessarily the market for them approach. So we could see potentially a lack of interest.
So sort of, I guess, a common question that I think, you know, there, there is a sort of a retail revenue generating component, which I, I think you've indicated some of the challenges, you know, that the community wanting more restaurants, you know, Zeke's comes in, which is great, but it's like, you know, it's another, they want diversity. And a lot of that goes into how we develop sort of the theme of the city and bringing people in to support those businesses. We've talked a lot about how we develop sort of the artist core and history here and, and, you know, in the past, I remember twenty years ago, there were a lot more galleries and art spaces that sort of circulate based on economic conditions and they come in, but they need to be sustained. Really not, as you said, by the residents, but more the influx of people visiting the community. So sort of how you build that. That's why we all, the one piece that I didn't necessarily see, and maybe you touched on this a little bit, you know, Jennifer was around the you referenced the thirty percent of remote work. And I'm one of those, you know, people I work for a company remotely, but we also, you know, with the shift in the, in the economics with Amazon taking the place of a lot of brick and mortar stores, people just order directly. There is maybe not as much need for, for retail storefront as there is we talked about before, flex space or startup space or incubation labs where walls can be moved or expanded or you can expand into different space. But I think what I heard Director Thomas says, this is going to be some of the same challenges around cost per square foot because that's primarily leasing revenue. But I didn't know if that's something you looked at because we have a lot of tech workers or even, you know, folks who are starting out on Etsy and they want to get out of their hats. They don't want to commute into an office or a space. They just want to, you know, go somewhere else or get away from other wives, kids, you know, this sort of thing. If there was any thought in terms of creating these absolutely smaller or micro spaces where people could, you know, start to work and like, almost like focus spaces and the mixed use business, you know, businesses got going without investing a whole lot in, you know, a large floor.
Oh, also, sorry, I did not bring up that topic. It's a really great, great point. Yeah, there is various policies where we added in support for small incubator spaces like you're discussing. And there is quite a growing market for that kind of space with people working remotely and maybe wanting more meeting spaces. And yeah, there was several policies and different, underneath different goals that looked at, you know, look, you know, helping whatever, whatever the city could do basically to help facilitate that kind of development. So yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I saw, so I saw the note about reading sub area plans for Midtown and Big Rock and Big Rock Road to two seventy eight or similar. And then talk about updating the downtown sub area plan. Were there other areas that popped up? Cause I know I kept saying were other, and I'm just curious, are there others out there that you suspect could come to fruition? Were, were those the being ones for now or just kind of open to developing?
I would say that that's, I mean, just doing kind of Main Street corner or Big Rock corners are pretty big lists. I would start with those. And we have our downtown plan still pretty good and still pretty relevant. So it probably just needs kind of a light refresh. But we don't have anything for Midtown and we're struggling a little bit to see that develop out. And the city invested in the curb gutter and sidewalk, you know, almost that case. And then Big Rock Road is kind of that new area where there is a lot of potential. That's where our spaces are, where our higher densities are. So I would probably start off in that area to do a sub area.
How's for a shaker?
Um, let's see, so some of the question in, in the in the document, there's a statement that the economic development supports on the GMA as a mandatory element. Yeah, no state funds have been allocated and creating them. So they are currently optional. Can, can you comment?
I, I can. So development is not a required element. Either it is parks or sustainability, one of those are optional elements and that's what we chose to do. So it is just something that we have chosen to do over the last.
One thing though, that I would know is even though they are optional, we need them to apply. So we have to have an element that says we have certain goals for projects in mind to get grant and they will grow those things.
Good, good point, good point. Can I? So, so many of the goals in the document, I, you know, that encourage tourism and distance development, I can certainly support those. There's other goals, however, that have an underlying theme of continued growth with an increase in housing and housing densities, you know, substitutes housing. Those I find very difficult to, to support simply because we want to keep people small. And we talked about a small town atmosphere, but you can't have a small town atmosphere if you're a big town. You have a small town atmosphere if you have a small town. So those are the ones that, you know, when we talk about additional zoning and expansion and growth tend to be counter, I guess, to what I think Duval is and counter to what many of our residents in Duval desire, as we've seen on numerous surveys. And, you know, I, I understand we have to comply with the GM, with the GMA, but the, you know, the artsy, artsy W really does not consider small detached rural type communities like Duval any differently than it does large suburbs like Bellevue and Kirkland and all the other big suburbs of Seattle. We have unique needs here that aren't recognized by the RCW. And we tend to be, you know, forced into a move or really do not go. That being said, I do very much appreciate Laura and, and everyone else that has worked out on, on this plan, recognizing that it is needed at least so we can apply for grants if it didn't.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. That makes me wonder, the jobs targets, is that required? But the element is required. So we'd have to fund the jobs somewhere else. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that would also need some team in our home use government as well.
Okay. So you can't get around providing. Yeah, I, I think that's what's actually a struggle for me is that we already have plenty of land. I mean, obviously not according to this to build enough for the jobs that I, I think is not a reasonable expectation of a city similar to Duval in our special circumstance that we wouldn't have that many jobs here in town. But we have land and we can't even get people to build what we have. And we even invested millions and millions of dollars on crunchage to make it easier and less expensive to help stimulate kind of the, the development of Main Street and this is the point of you, like you did anything wrong. I was talking, but I mean, and it sounds like, you know, the only thing that's really been built since I can remember is we have two churches, a church. And then maybe one or two more that are coming along Main Street in our commercial area. So I just, I feel like there's a bit of a disconnect in trying to figure out why we would need additional land and be required to provide additional land and the land we have no money to invest in. I, it's just a struggle for me to continue expanding when what we've seen in the past is what we get is more housing. And it sounds like the only way to even if we have this new thing, we would have to allow them to build more housing to get the commercial even more. But it sounds like that's your concern is we're chasing these jobs, which may or may not come to fruition. We're using a carrot of, well, you can build more housing and seems like that mostly just ends up more house, which means we want it small.
Well, I'm thinking historically, our, where we have heard of, we haven't done necessarily super, that they're still taking kind of a single story approach. And we still, other than the building across street, the permit center, that's really true. The only mixed use only the city has seen developed in a twenty five year period. So I think it's even difficult to build a mixed use property in this community. I think what we are going to have to do is we're going to have to go back and look at why aren't people building on Main Street is, I mean, there is a definite cost. Permitting is expensive and hack fees are expensive. But we also have a lot of constraints on our sites too, on Main Street, because you're either down slope or you're up slope, right? So the costs are really expensive. So maybe we have to go back to the drawing table and look, what else can we do to incur development on Main Street and Big Rock Road? And see if there's any way to invite that development. We did end up choosing to remove the jobs that we thought were going to occur within our religious institution to go about. Those took up quite a bit of land there. So we had to take that out and it didn't seem like they were going to be converting, right, to the model that would have more jobs. We also had one of our larger industrial, our largest pieces of property turn it over to storage, which is immediately used within our community, but there's very few jobs there. So it was a struggle to make our job targets really with or without residential development. I think you kind of do still have to kind of park them out a little bit and not necessarily think about them together. But, you know, economists will always tell you, you do need rooftops to generate new business because they need to stay open. And they still need your local population to support them. Not just on the weekends.
I also wrote in our, our projection for twenty forty is nine thousand something in population. Did I read that correctly?
Uh, that wouldn't have been in our economic development. That's going to come up in our Angie's capacity.
Okay, it showed up somewhere, but um, just for kicks, I just now pulled up, you know, City of Snohomish, you can give it all free. City of Snohomish is a small town. And they have a population of ten thousand fifty. We're only talking about, you know, another thousand, fifteen hundred people over the quarter, twenty years. So you don't really think that adding more housing is really that much of a, of a stretch for a town of our size. And yes, as a small business owner, it's hard to get people indoors. And without one people coming in, we're going to do, it's a struggle. So you know, yeah, it was nice to see everybody knew everybody, you were two, three degrees of everybody, but it's not always going to be that way, but it doesn't mean that you can't meet more people. Yeah, we just, we just have a lot to consider. I mean, I know everybody wants more restaurants, but I mean, we talked to the people that own restaurants and it's hard for them to get help that's reliable, that can, you know, wait, that can do dishes. And then, you know, it's good that we have a living wage, but that also gets to their bottom line. It's like and I pay somebody twenty dollars an hour and still provide the same level of service and the same prices and quality of food. It's it's just a lot. So we have a lot of challenges.
Yeah, I just, this was over thirteen years ago, but we had owned a single family attached. There is a complex in the supply islands that were built specifically to be homes and yet also had a business front type thing on the first floor that would face out to the street. People would use this or, you know, working from home or they might have their real estate business out of it or some kind of storefront type thing. That was the intention. And so I was curious if, you know, when we're talking about mixed use and I mean, does that, I'm assuming that might fit in that category. You know, often I actually think of retail on the bottom you know, apartments or something on top. But I mean, there were interesting other concepts. I think our nation might have a complex that's going in that's similar to that, but it might have worked over the years. But I'm just curious if that is something that would come out of more sub area plan. I'd be, I realized that would be facing Main Street like right there, but like maybe back then, I mean, is that something that would fit in here or we have to work on that?
So we already allow that type of use. But maybe there's a way where we look at it and again, see why are we not getting it out of the, how can we encourage to come in and, and use a model where you can live in the back, live up top and have a small, small shingle in the front.
Yeah. Um, I just want to know, you know, on Main Street, during the last comprehensive candidate update, critical areas were enhanced way above the standard. And during that discussion, there, it was discussed and noted that that changing our standards to be above what was minimum required would likely result in much more difficulty building on Main Street. So we have several pieces of property on Main Street that are underdeveloped, that are now less developable than they were ten years ago as a result of policies that have been approved. And so in addition to the economic factors, the environmental factors are significant in initial property developable as well. So that's an important note. It's not just about economics. There's environmental factors, they probably much more difficult to build and make bigger facilities. And the types of businesses we want to see make it more difficult in slopes in those areas. So just note of that, and I would ask council to keep that in mind as well. We have excellent environmental issues in our community. But we also are two square miles. And so the amount of economic or environmental benefit that you get for having super enhanced standards, which can actually be a huge economic detriment to your ability as community to grow, then that's forcing you to, and additionally, you get to build those. So I just want to throw that out there is, is that's the comment that we didn't discuss. That's definitely a major factor in being able to get those more facilities. Thank you. So, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I heard a lot of discussion about Duval is small small town atmosphere, but I really don't see how Duval will be successful in the future without adding population to our city. I mean, it's unrealistic to think that you're going to continue with the services that we have with our existing population, especially with the decline of housing. It's sort of a, I put, uh, Duval over the last ten, fifteen years. So, I mean, I, I don't have the point of annexation and I don't have the point of building more houses. I mean, but I think that's the only way we're going to get these retail offices and retail spaces that everybody wants. Increased restaurants, that, that more restaurants, that's going to, we're going to get more restaurants. So basically the only way we're going to get our police department paid for is by continually growing. And you see these communities that cease to grow, that restrain population growth. You just see a steady decline in services over the years. And while we're maintaining the small city atmosphere, I, I think we do that in a lot of ways with our community events we have. I think that's probably the proper way to go to maintain that. And rather than restricting housing and growth. I think that's probably the proper way to go to maintain that, you know, rather than restricting um housing and, and growth, so.
Oh, um, thank you so much, Jennifer, and Director Thomas. We're listening this evening. Lots of good work going on here. Um, it's much appreciated.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, um, moving on to our final general business study, we have a public hearing. On the breaking sources for the upcoming annual budget, we all have a presentation um presented by I'll open up a presentation by I had Dr. Iflin, uh, and then we'll have the opportunity for the public hearing will then be closed. Um, and then again, we'll return our meeting and council will be able to discuss um these items on our next council meeting. So with that, we'll open the hearing.
Good evening. Um, that's McMen, my name is Director. I am going to be presenting preliminary revenue estimates. Next. Okay, so the foundation of our city government is our fiscal. The revenue received from present and projected set the state for the fact that what services to provide and the level of those services including facilities, equipment, and we need to talk with that one being good. Next. So looking at the parameters for revenue estimates, we assume one percent property tax increase, which impacts our um revenue to our general fund and our street fund. Impact fees, general facility charges are increased by two-year average and January news report. Utilities and building permit fees increased by the two-year average CPI. So, property tax. Property taxes are the oldest form of taxation in Washington and the largest single revenue source for many local governments. For RCW tax, see districts can increase their total regular property tax amount by a minimum of one percent per year. Plus an additional amount for new construction. The limit was put in place due to concerns about property plus levies rising faster than the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four levy increased by one percent and we assume a one percent increase for twenty-five and twenty-six. We currently have a levy lift, which will end December of twenty-five. Eighty percent of our regular property tax and one hundred percent of our levy lift are deposited into our general fund. The remaining twenty percent of regular property taxes deposited into the street fund. What's important to note for property tax is that in twenty twenty-six, our total estimate income is reduced by about five hundred thousand due to the end of the levy lift. Regular property taxes due at the end of April and October, so revenue is mostly received in spring and fall. So we need to keep that in mind um as for managing our cash flow. Um, fall, or sorry, year-to-date income is tracking to meet our annual estimate. And you can see a revenue trend of annual increases. But property tax revenues are constrained by the one hundred one percent limitation, which we refer to as a levy limit. Um, property tax is becoming a declining tier of local government budgets. Life again overall is evolving, become less dependent on property taxes. Property tax revenues may be used for any local governmental purpose. Next, let me. So where does property tax go? This is an example of a property in Duval showing the distribution of property tax. So in twenty twenty-five, property tax calculation is assuming the local increase. For twenty-five, we can see a decrease in the value of new construction with an estimated allowable levy for twenty twenty-five of two million five seventy-five and forty. So twenty twenty-five property tax levy rate calculated using current assessed value can be still levy rate of point ninety-seven percent, which is slightly less than the twenty twenty-four. So here's a property tax example. This is a property in Duval with a current assessed value of one million sixty-four thousand. Twenty twenty-five, one percent increase equals nine hundred eighty-one twenty. For RCW taxing districts are allowed to increase property taxes by a maximum of one percent a year. If the taxing district levy is less than one percent, it can bank the difference and levy it in future. Sales tax applies to retail sales of tangible personal property. As mentioned before, walking time is evolving to become less dependent on property tax revenue, which is one hundred one percent limitation. It's beginning to rely more and more on sales tax. The challenge is that sales tax revenue can be volatile, more volatile than property tax. General sales tax revenue is estimated based on the King County economic forecast. General sales tax is deposited to the general fund. Sales tax from construction is split with a set amount deposited to the general fund increased by the engineering report each, each year. The remaining amount of sales tax from construction is deposited to the strategic fund. Current year-to-date general sales tax revenue is on target to meet our annual estimate. Sales tax from construction revenue may or may not meet our annual estimate. Overall, we're seeing a small but steady increase in sales tax, sales tax revenue over the years as we estimate that steady growth to continue. Sales tax revenues are unrestricted and may be used for any local government purpose. Transportation benefit district sales follows the general sales tax trend based on King County economic forecast. We estimate small increases in revenue year over year. Year-to-date revenue at three hundred and thirty-six thousand five fifty keeps us on target for our annual estimate. And these funds are used to support transportation projects. Utility tax is estimated as ten percent sales with electric components mostly being installed in new homes. We may see gas tax becoming less. Year-to-date revenue of one point one million keeps us on target for our annual estimate for twenty twenty-four. Utility tax revenue is deposited into our general fund. Building and permit revenues are declining as we see a decline in housing permits. Year-to-date revenue of just over one million is on track for our annual twenty-four estimate. It is important to note that increased revenue from prior years provides a strong fund balance to provide continued support for the work needing to be completed in the in the next few years. Impact fees for school, park and traffic, um, year-to-date actuals are in line to meet with twenty twenty-four estimates. Parking traffic impact fee revenue are deposited into our park and street CIP funds. General facility charges revenue from these charges are deposited into our capital improvement funds. Year-to-date actuals are tracking to meet with twenty twenty-four annual estimates. The utility charges for services, utility rates increase by the estimated average two-year CPIU in addition to incoming for growth. We see a steady rise in revenue year over year. Current year-to-date actuals are tracking to meet twenty twenty-four annual estimates. These funds are used to support the co- cost of operating the systems in addition to replacing equipment and expanding facilities to meet service demands. A real estate excess tax is levied upon all sales of real estate. Rate, that's in common, revenue can be somewhat volatile since it depends on both the volume of real estate sales and the sales sale value of the property sold. Current year-to-date rate revenue through August is this eight hundred and eleven two thousand five forty-nine with one hundred and eighty-two units sold, which is on track to meet our annual estimate. Rate funds are used to support capital projects. Investment earnings, um, city funds are invested to create additional revenue. Funds are invested in a manner that provides security as well as good rate of investment return, while also meaning that cities' daily cash flow needs. Investment earnings have experienced, experienced a rise, drastic rise in twenty twenty-three and our earnings. Current year-to-date actual earnings through August are over one point one million dollars. And we are on track to meet our twenty twenty-four annual estimate. Twenty twenty-five and twenty-six estimates, we remain conservative. So next up would be public comments and then we will continue the public hearing and continue the stuff on October fifth.
Thank you very much, David. You have a very good morning, our fellow, led to, you know, three minutes to speak. So we will, we will continue on the fifteen and move backwards to last series of key from the business, we have a picture. Thank you.